Good evening. I will reconvene in the open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on September 5th, 2024, beginning at 7:35 PM. I want to apologize for the delay in us getting out here tonight. That has been, it's a bit uncharacteristic of us, and we had a pretty heavy closed session agenda, and so appreciate y'all being patient. So our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we do have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted, and anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by security attending the meeting. We do welcome civic input, but insist that we remain respectful and civil. We will start our meeting tonight with the opening ceremony. Bit of a new thing for us tonight. We're going to ask you to please join student Andrew Steele, a sixth grader from Duff Elementary, in leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and invisible.
At this time, I'll please ask that everybody silence their cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you, and would ask that you join me tonight in our customary moment of silence. And I would also ask that while you do so, that you please keep our friends in Georgia in your thoughts tonight. Unfortunately, had to do this all too often with our moment of silences. Thank you. We'll move on now to our open forum for agenda items. Ms. Crossno, do we have any speakers registered for open forum?
President Chappa, we do not.
Having no speakers, we'll move on to our program and presentations tonight, beginning with a student performance by the Arlington High School String Ensemble.
President Chappa, members of the board, Dr. Smith, as you mentioned, we are going to have a fabulous performance tonight. So let me tell you a little bit about it. We are going to welcome Arlington High School's School Chamber Orchestra, directed by Chris Chapman. These students represent the very best of the best at Arlington High School. The chamber orchestra is comprised of select members of the symphony orchestra and performs a separate program for each concert and UIL performance. They also perform often for Arlington High School, the Arlington ISD events, like the one you're at tonight, and also across the community. So we're really proud of them for that. Tonight, they're pleased to perform improvata. Take it away.
All right. At this time, we'll move on to our next item on our program. We have the introduction of our new Student Leadership Advisory Board, and we'll ask Dr. Jarco to come to the podium.
Good evening, members of the board, President Chappa, Dr. Smith. It's an honor to be here tonight to introduce our 2425 Student Leadership Advisory Board. At the honor of working with these students in this distinguished young leader's school year, the group is comprised of our junior class presidents from each of our six traditional high schools, a member from Arlington Collegiate, and an our member from Arlington College and Career High School. The purpose of the group of student leaders is to represent AISD student opinions and provide the voice of students to the Board of Trustees and the AISD community at large. SLAB members assist in building relationships between students, Board of Trustees, campuses, senior staff, and the superintendent. They had an opportunity to engage in a board workshop tonight that leaned into those exact same leadership qualities and skills. They're assigned a partner board member, and they meet regularly with the group of Board of Trustees. While these young men and women have no official voting rights, they provide a very, very valuable opinion in terms of how we conduct business in Arlington ISD. The group is led by a student who served as a SLAB member last year. She was elected by outgoing SLAB members to serve as this year's president, and that SLAB president from 2425 comes to us from Lombard High School, and her name is Cara Peterson. Cara, I'm going to have you go ahead and stand. Cara, it's already begun some of her work as a student leader to go ahead and build her own leadership capacity by also leaning into a training called Leader in Me and being a part of a district cadre of about 35 or 36 people that are leading work in about 12 or 13 of our schools. And she's already provided a valuable voice. We just appreciate her for her work. So thank you, Cara. In addition to Cara, we also have our new members that we want to go ahead and introduce tonight, and the following students are going to be serving for the 2425 school year. I'm going to ask each of them to stand and stay standing after I call your name. First, from Arlington Collegiate, Salatuwa Nua. From Arlington College and Career, Leo Rodriguez. From Arlington High School, Camila Howard. From Bowie High School, Macy Nguyen. From Lamar High School, Fred Threets. From Martin High School, Taylor Boszek. From Sam Houston High School, Angeli Gonzalez. And from Seguin High School, Lindsay Nguyen. Our SLAB members will have some amazing opportunities this year, but they're also represented at home by parents, guardians, and some of those parents and guardians are also here tonight. We absolutely know that those parents and guardians are important in public education, also important in raising young men and women and bringing great leaders to our districts. We just want to go ahead and thank them for their work with our students. And with that being said, we look forward to working with our new members of the Student Leadership Advisory Committee in 2024, and look forward to seeing the great work they will do. Thank you.
Congratulations to our new SLAB members. We'll now move on to our Student of the Month. First one for this year, Ms. Foster.
Please welcome Principal Stacy Humbles.
Thank you for that walk. I'm Anita. Board President Chappa, Dr. Smith, and members of the board, it is my honor to introduce the first and best Student of the Month for the 2425 school year, Ms. Michaela Cathcart from Arlington High School. Michaela was selected because she represents everything that is Arlington High School. She is an exceptional student, involved in multiple programs, and is a kind and caring friend to all. Currently, Michaela is in the top 2% of her class. She has an extremely rigorous schedule and has taken all AP and college-level courses during her four years at Arlington High. She understands the importance of academics and works hard to keep her education as her top priority. However, as you all know by now, I personally feel that a student can only be exceptional if they are truly well-rounded with abilities outside of academics, and Michaela has shown her ability to do all things well. She has been on the varsity volleyball team for all four years of her athletics career and is in her second year as a team captain. She has earned first-team all-district honors as well as academic all-district honors. And just this week, she was recognized for over 1,000 career assists, a huge milestone for setters. Michaela is not just a leader on the volleyball team. She has positively impacted the students of Arlington High through various leadership roles. She's a member of Key Club, NHS, and StuCo, and she is currently the StuCo Secretary. She was chosen as an AISD representative at the Rotary Youth Leadership Summer Camp. She also heads the Arlie's Angels Charity Drive each year at Arlington High, and she's the senior class president. As you can see, Michaela holds many significant roles at Arlington High School, but none is more important than being the most famous person in all of Arlington, our school mascot, Arlie. Michaela is a delightful mascot and has won multiple awards for her contagious spirit while in costume. If she doesn't change the world as a doctor, lawyer, or politician, she will be the next Philly fanatic. I'm so proud of Michaela and so grateful to have her at Arlington High School. She brings joy to every space she's in and has truly been a gift to us all. Ladies and gentlemen, Michaela Cathcart.
Good evening, President Chappa, Dr. Smith, and distinguished members of the board. My name is Michaela Cathcart, and like Mrs. Humble said, I'm a current senior at the Arlington High School. With me today, I've brought both of my parents, Michael and Jennifer Cathcart, my little brother Graham, my Lolo, my Lola, my grandpa, my principal, Mrs. Humbles, and other members of my Arlington High friends and family. Growing up, I've always been surrounded by Kelly Green. While neither of my parents were Arlington High School graduates themselves, many of my teachers, friends' parents, and other members of my community were. Throughout attending various little cult camps, I was introduced to the idea of what it means to be a cult. But it wasn't until I walked through the doors of my freshman year that I finally started to understand why everyone would willingly choose to love a school this much. Being involved in many activities around my campus, I've been able to work and grow with many different students and faculty members. While each group and organization brings something different to the table, they all have one thing in common: we all bleed green. Now, while we don't all literally bleed green, because that might be a little concerning, we all share a common love and appreciation for our school. Whether their favorite tradition is our extravagant homecoming pep rally, decorating for spirit halls, attending sports events, or even linking pinkies during the singing of our alma mater, everyone has a place at Arlington High. There truly is something for everyone. We all are a piece to this beautiful puzzle, and together, we are the reason why the tradition bleeds on. Arlington High has taught me to embrace all of my strengths and interests and try everything. Arlington High has taught me the true meaning of loyalty and tradition that will definitely be hard for any college to top. But most importantly, Arlington High has given me a home full of all the people that I love the most, working together and celebrating our differences to continue this longstanding tradition. I mean, who else can say that random alumni jump out at them in public when they see you wearing an Arlington High shirt and start singing the fight song? True story. Nothing beats seeing the faces of little kids light up, just like they've seen Santa when they see little Arlie, or when I throw them a volleyball into the stands, or even hearing our joyful alumni band playing at every city parade. Now I can say that I too am a huge fan of the Kelly Green. Thank you all for this award and taking time out of your day to listen to me. Thank you for all that you do for staff members, parents, and students like me. You're the reason that I can love something like school this much. Thank you again. Kick'em Colts.
Congratulations on all your achievements.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing what you'll do in the future. And we have, do we have a item to give, Ms. Cathcart? Okay. I will come down with Dr. Smith, and we'll join you and present you with a little present. Well, Michaela, we give a plaque to every one of our Students of the Month, and so I'll present that to you right now. And then something else that we do is we present you with a district pin. And you'll notice all the trustees wear the pin, and it's something that we only give out to people who have done something really special, and you're certainly deserving of that. So we'll invite, we'll take some pictures with Dr. Smith, and we will take a short recess here in a minute after we do our administrative appointment so we can get parents to come down and do a few more pictures as well. And it's a total coincidence that I'm wearing Kelly Green tonight, and Miss Humbles knows that this is not normal for me, but I bought, I got a new special public ed shirt today, and I just had to wear it. Do we have Spence? Does Spence come in to take a picture?
Right behind me, sorry.
For once, I miss Spence. Okay, we have one more item on our program and presentation section tonight, and that is our Community Partner Award of Appreciation, and I'm pretty sure I'm supposed to turn it over to Mr. Peralis at this time.
Thank you, President Chappa, Dr. Smith, members of the board. How awesome and comforting it is to live and work in a community that constantly answers the call when we reach out, or knocks on the door to say, "How can we help?" I'd like to thank the entirety of our community for helping us to have a wonderful and awesome and great beginning to the school year. Whether that outreach initiative was large or small, it was all heartfelt and impactful. So thank you to our community. Tonight, it is my honor and our honor to present a special award to an organization that has been an unwavering pillar of support to our community. For over a decade, Rush Creek Church has been a pillar and an extraordinary partner and a sponsor of our Arlington ISD Back to School Kickoff event, generously contributing nearly $50,000 over a 10-year period to ensure the event's success. Their commitment goes beyond mere sponsorship, but Rush Creek Church has become an integral part of our community's annual tradition, again over 10 years old. Rush Creek Church's contributions do not stop there. Their partnership extends to vital initiatives like our Community Job Fair, organizing collaboration with us, and Workforce Solutions for Tarrant County. This event, held every spring, is specifically marketed to our Arlington ISD families, providing invaluable opportunities and resources for those in need. And the church also opens the doors of their church to host this awesome event. In addition, Rush Creek's dedication to education is truly commendable with their Rush Week. Each year, they partner with seven Arlington ISD campuses assisting teachers and staff as they prepare for the new school year. Their support includes providing essential resources and supplies, which significantly impacts our educational environment and enhances the learning experience for our students. Also, just last month, Rush Creek Church demonstrated their extraordinary generosity once again by gifting Seguin High School with a $10,000 donation to support an on-campus food pantry. This incredible contribution was shared with our community at a special Sunday service, where Seguin High School principal Billy Lenson and Eric Phillips, family engagement specialists, were in attendance. This donation will undoubtedly make a substantial difference in the lives of many students and families, ensuring that they have access to nutritious food and support. And these are just some of the highlights of how they support us every day, year after year. It is with great gratitude that we present our Arlington ISD Community Partner Award of Appreciation to Rush Creek Church. Their dedication, generosity, and unwavering support have made a profound impact on our community and our schools. Please join me in celebrating and thanking Rush Creek Church for their remarkable contributions, and I would like to introduce their lead pastor, Pastor Marty Collier, to the podium.
Well, thank you so much for recognizing Rush Creek, and it truly is an honor to just be able to serve this community. Obviously, with what we've already had a moment of silence for, our school districts, our teachers, our administrators are absolutely underneath so much pressure. And so we just want you and them to know that you have people in your corner that are praying, that are standing beside you and serving, and doing everything we can. Our motto really is Rush Creek Loves, and if we want to be known for anything in our community, in the city of Arlington, for our schools, our school district, it's Rush Creek Loves.
Thank you so much for all that you do. I know the blessing that you've been able to give through the Back to School Kickoff every year. We've been able to see that firsthand, and I know how much work y'all do in the community. We're kind of neighbors that live really close to Rush Creek and are a very visible part of our community, and thank you for that.
Thank you, President Chappa.
Similar to what we did earlier, we do have a gift of our appreciation, and Dr. Smith will come down, and I will ask, because I want to make sure y'all get good photos this time, and I ask Vice President McMurro to join y'all for these photos tonight.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
So thank you very much for being here tonight. On behalf of the Board of Trustees and myself as the superintendent of the school district, I'm honored to be a part of a school district where we come together to serve kids. Your efforts in the history that you have shown and dedication to our kids and our community speaks volumes about your love for the school district. So thank you, thank you, thank you, from my perspective, for what you do for everyone in our community.
Okay, we will move on to our administrative appointments. Dr. Smith?
Sorry, I didn't have my book open where I was supposed to have when I got back, and I had to put those glasses on. One of the distinct honors that I have is to recommend to the Board of Trustees new teammates to join our school district in leading for the sake of our kids. So President Chappa, I would like to recommend that the Board ratify the appointments of the individuals discussed in closed session this evening.
Do we have a motion to approve the administrative ratifications?
Motion.
I have a motion from Vice President McMurro. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Fowler. Trustees, let's vote. All seven trustees voting in the affirmative. It unanimously carries. I'll turn it back to Dr. Smith.
It is my honor to welcome our new Assistant Principal for Nichols Junior High School, Ricardo Butler. Ricardo, come on up to the podium, please. Now, this is a real distinct honor, because we're promoting somebody in our school district who's done good work for our school district for so long. So Ricardo, thank you for what you've done in the past, and thank you for what you're going to do in the future for Nichols. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. President Chappa, members of the board, Dr. Smith, thank you all. Good evening. I'm truly honored and excited to step into the role of Assistant Principal at Nichols Junior High. My time in Atherton Elementary has been filled with wonderful experience, and I'm deeply grateful for the support of my Atherton family and our amazing community. I want to especially thank my principal, Ms. Gulston, for her guidance and her mentorship during my time at Atherton. As I transitioned to this new role, I'm thrilled to join the Nichols family and to work under the leadership of Ms. Claiborne. Together, I know we'll continue to build on this incredible work being done at Nichols, and I can't wait to be a part of this journey with my new team. I would also like to thank my support team, Dr. Morales, Mrs. Maroni, Mr. Tave, and Ms. Green, for your mentorship and continued guidance in this leadership journey. And last but not least, I mentioned her last, and I'm probably on a growth plan now, my amazing, wonderful wife, Jamie Butler. I love you. Thank you for your support. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Butler, and I know you're going to do great things at Nichols and appreciate the work you've done at Atherton. This has a special place for me. That's where I went to elementary school for part of my career here in AISD. At this time, we will take our customary recess to celebrate the folks who were honored tonight and promoted tonight, and so we will try to get back in here. Trustees, let's try to get back at 8:15. It's 8:04. We'll be in recess. All right. I will call this meeting back from recess at 8:15, and we'll move on to reports, beginning with our Governance Committee report, and I'll turn that to Vice President McMurro.
Thank you, President Chappa. Our Governance Committee met Monday of last week. Since it's short week, I'm trying to calculate exactly what day it was, but Monday of last week. We are moving forward with our first superintendent evaluation coming up in very likely early November, and we were tying up some loose ends with that. We have been working with Mr. Orrin Moore from TASVE to make sure that we're developing a superintendent evaluation instrument that's appropriate, and we are also going to workshop thereafter to revisit the instrument and make sure that we are continuing to evolve. As Dr. Smith has not been with us for a full academic year yet, so the next instrument will likely have a more robust format to go with, and that will involve the whole board probably in a workshop setting. We also met about a couple policies that you guys have for your review this evening, and I'm trying to think what else I'm missing, committee. We, oh, we did have a workshop tonight around reviewing our board handbook. Every year, we review our board handbook.
All right, I will call this meeting back from recess at 8:15, and we'll move on to reports, beginning with our Governance Committee report. And I'll turn that to Vice President McMurro.
Thank you, President Chapa. Our Governance Committee met Monday of last week. Since it's short week, I'm trying to calculate exactly what day it was, but Monday of last week. We are moving forward with our first Superintendent Evaluation coming up in very likely early November. And we were tying up some loose ends with that. We have been working with Mr. Orrin Moore from TASB to make sure that we're developing a Superintendent Evaluation instrument that's appropriate. And we are also going to workshop thereafter to revisit the instrument and make sure that we are continuing to evolve. As Dr. Smith has not been with us for a full academic year yet, so the next instrument will likely have a more robust format to go with. And that will involve the whole board probably in a workshop setting. We also met about a couple policies that you guys have for your review this evening, and I'm trying to think what else I'm missing, committee. We, oh, we did have a workshop tonight around reviewing our Board Handbook. Every year, we review our Board Handbook individually, and I really found a lot of power tonight in reviewing it as a team of eight, getting and combing through its components together. I also really appreciate each of our SLAB students for joining us for that. I thought that it was really neat. I was just talking to Dr. Wirths about how it gave our SLAB students an opportunity to see behind the curtain what the Board of Trustees is responsible for, what our charge is, and that we are committed to continuous improvement to serve them. And so, I just appreciate each of y'all for joining us in that workshop and being an active part of it. Trustee Haynes, trustee Fowler, am I leaving anything out? Please chime in. Thank you.
Thank you for the Governance Committee report. And we'll move on now to Report Item B, Recruitment and Retention. Dr. Smith?
President Chapa, members of the board, thank you for giving us the opportunity tonight. I'd like to invite Scott Cale up here to the podium, along with his team probably, to talk a little bit about recruitment and retention in Arlington ISD. As you know, the human resource function of our school district is an extremely important one with over 8,000 staff members in the district, and filling those hard-to-fill positions is a key component of that. So, Scott's going to walk us through, and his team are going to walk us through, how we go about that and some highlights of what we've accomplished along the way.
Thank you. Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board, and Dr. Smith. Cliff Peak, our new Director of Recruiting, and Dolores Johnson, our Executive Director of HR, are also here with us. I'll hand off a few slides to Cliff in the middle of the presentation, and we'll kind of go back and forth and make sure we do a good job for you, providing this information. So, purpose of our objective tonight of this presentation is to make sure that we share with you, this is a different slide.
That is not the correct presentation. That would be my goals presentation that comes up after this. Trustees, please hold for a moment of difficulty while we make sure the right presentation is up in front of everyone.
If I had tried to fix that, it would have taken much longer. So, we appreciate you very much. So, take two. The objective of our presentation tonight is we want to provide you with an overview of the district's recruiting strategies, our progress in filling critical positions, and annualized employee attrition rates as we look back the last couple years. This first slide gives you a few examples, and rather than read each one of them for you, the objective here is to tell you that we take very seriously screening of applicants who are going to work with our kids. And so, understandably, there's always a pressure to get positions filled as quickly as possible. You need a teacher in every classroom at the beginning of the school year. You also need to make sure, whether it's teachers or any other position, that you've done due diligence, and you know who you're putting with kids, and you know that they're good for kids. And so, we take extraordinary efforts that are often behind the scenes, that range from the physical, if it's relevant to the job, and background checks, and highly qualified exams for TAs, and Gallup scores in terms of indicators of potential success for teachers, for example. That's a tool that we use with them. And so, when we talk about cycle time here a little bit, in terms of how long it takes to process someone, remember that these elements are built into that. I think you'll see that we've improved quite a bit in that area, but we don't want to go so fast that we aren't paying attention to the quality of the applicants that we bring to work in our schools. Thought it would be helpful to give you some insight in terms of the recruiting volume. Something that may not be widely known or recognized is that period of time between when contracts end at the end of a school year and when teachers, whether in our district or any other district, are locked back into their contracts and therefore really not eligible applicants to be considered, is a relatively short period of time. It's effectively from the end of May until about July 4th or 5th, depending on the year. And in that period of time, you find out who's leaving, for the most part, with some exceptions of earlier retirements, and you have to find the replacements at the same time. And so, when you take that into consideration, you say, well, how many folks are we talking about? You can look at the slide that's in front of you, and you can see that teachers alone, the full-time positions that we filled as we've gone through the last couple of years, in that window, just for teachers, about 618 this year, 697 the last year when attrition was a little bit higher and we had more positions to fill. But it's consistently at or above 600 in the last couple of years. That '24, '25 year to date is, to the extent that we're not really done with the cycle yet, it effectively ends at the end of September. I expect it'll be close to where we were in the previous two years. In addition, our college recruiting program, when you say, okay, now, where do we find the origin? Where are we looking for these applicants? Are we being thorough in our search and our development of applicants to fill our jobs that we know are going to come open year to year? You can see that we attend about 13 university job fairs a year. We also attend a variety of other local job fairs for our auxiliary and our SNE staff. And then, we host student teachers and observers from a variety of different universities throughout the DFW area. You can see that in '23, '24, about just under 200 student teachers were in our system, and about 300 or 312, I guess, student observers. It's not really a decrease in the current year. Again, that's year to date, and we're just getting started in '24, '25. The opportunity here is to make sure we're getting a return on investment and pulling those people back into our system rather than just investing in them throughout the year. And there's absolutely some work to be done there, but we are paying attention to that and trying to capitalize on those folks that are already with us in a different capacity earlier in their careers. Bridge substitutes has been one of the channels that we've used for the purpose of developing more candidates. You might call it grow your own, or our version of grow your own. As far as I know, I might be proven wrong, we were one of the first, if not the first, district to try and do something like this. And nothing, when it's coming right out of the box, is ever perfect. The objective was to find an alternative, not for certified teachers, but an alternative to continue to develop the applicant flow, which we know across education has been lacking in terms of teacher applicants interested in coming into the career. And so, through a variety of different alternative certification programs, whether it be Texas Teachers, whether it be recently a new relationship with UTA, or whether it be other third-party ALERT programs, we have brought people in to effectively take on the classroom. Well, they will teach once they've finished their certification, come in as a long-term substitute, get their experience to finish off that cert that they've already committed to and that's well in progress, and then transition to a full-time staff member certified in that classroom. In 2022, '23, one of the first years that we did that, you can see that we had 260. It went up to 324 in the next year, and then we're just getting started this year with 138. Those gray bars are a subset of bridge teachers, which we call District Select. And so, those gray bars are actually members of those populations, of those bridge substitute populations, that we are sponsoring, paying their ALERT fees. So, we have a program within a program to help people that might not be able to afford it otherwise, and sponsor them and incentivize them to come to Arlington to engage in a program like this versus maybe go to another district. So, with that, I'm going to transition to Cliff Peak, our new recruiting director, for a few slides. He's going to talk in particular about some very specific initiatives where we know we've had opportunity in the past, sped bus drivers, and he'll talk about maybe one other where I think we've made some pretty good progress, and he'll give you those details. Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board, Dr. Smith. Some areas of AISD with more challenging to manage openings require targeted recruiting strategies. So, a good example of that is the sped openings. Brailleless deaf teachers, deaf TAs are some of the harder-to-fill positions in the district. Sped teachers, sped TAs, they do create a volume of openings. We typically have a large number of people in process to be hired, and it's necessitated having very targeted strategies, especially along the lines of the TAs, sped TAs. So, for all positions on sped, we use targeted university programs for sped bridge substitutes, which includes Texas Teachers, and we're recently building a really good relationship with UT Arlington. Additionally, we use agencies when they're needed, and we utilize ZipRecruiter job postings to produce weekly interviews at the Administrative Building and onsite fast hire offers. I'm going to give you a good example of that. So, if you go back and look at sped TA hiring, July 1st, 2023, we had 134 vacant positions at that time, quite a few. By increased efficiency, a better job of the recruiting team working with the hiring managers, year to year, that went down to 94 vacant positions on July 1st, 2024. We looked at the 94 vacant positions and developed a strategy to reduce that number even further. So, my predecessor, Angie Smith, worked with Cindy Brown, and they came up with a strategy for Angie to conduct interviews, make on-the-spot offers, and see if we could reduce that opening. So, the recruiter in the group posted the position on ZipRecruiter, went through candidates, scheduled interviews. Angie interviewed those. We made on-the-spot offers. You can see the numbers here that we did six interview days between June 25th and August 14th. That resulted in 19 interviews and 13 verbal offers that were accepted. That, in addition to what the campus was doing and continuing to fill positions, we reduced that number from 94 to 56. In about a month and a half, looking at August 18th, you see we had 56 vacant positions. With leveling going on right now, we expect to reduce that number further, and we're going to continue the strategy with the slight change that principals going forward will decide on making offers rather than human resources. Along the same lines, we used a similar strategy. Did I lose the slide? Sorry. Okay. Gotcha. So, along the same lines, we used a similar strategy with bus drivers. If you go to July 3rd, 2023, we had 86 open bus drivers. That's a lot. Through better processing, more efficiency within our group, working a little bit more effectively with Dr. Hill and his team, we were able to, year over year, move that down to 42 vacant positions. So, that was the number on July 1st, 2024. We implemented a similar strategy in that we posted the position on ZipRecruiter. We had a large number of people apply. We had a recruiter go through those applicants, set up interviews, and then we had a member of transportation, a leadership member, sit with the recruiter in the face-to-face interview. And for candidates we felt real strong about, we made an offer there onsite. And you can see the results of that. So, in 10 interview days that we did at the administrative office here, from July 2nd to August 15th, we had 72 interviews. We extended 31 verbal offers that were accepted on the spot, and that's led us down to 16 vacant positions on August 18th. So, for the first day of school, my understanding is all routes were covered. So, in addition to the recruiting strategies that I've shown you in the last two examples, we've also made a lot of process efficiency improvements. We measure efficiency based on cycle time. So, cycle time is measured from the time a request to hire is submitted until it's forwarded to schedule new hire orientation. So, we'll look at year-over-year results, and going back to 22, 2022, 2023 school year, the average for all positions was 17.37 calendar days of processing. We've improved that by 20% year-over-year. So, for this school year, we were down to 14.53 average days for all positions. Looking more specifically at teachers, in 22, 23, we were at 12.61 days on average, and then have improved 27%, down to 9.9 days of processing time for teachers this last school year. Looking more specifically at 2024, you can see that we're at 8.9 days for all positions and 8.6 calendar days for teachers on average. I'll turn it back over to Scott, and he will talk about attrition. Great. Thank you, Cliff. So, thought it might be interesting as well to see some data as it pertained to attrition. We know as we've come out of the COVID era, it was certainly a concern for our district as well as others. I'm going to start with the far-right side of that slide. It's a comparative between school districts from the TEA data at 50,000 or better of students as a reference. And for this '23, '24 school year, that number for those districts was 17%, and ours came in at 14. So, we'd always like it to be lower. However, comparatively, we've made some progress. And you can also see the bubble that's popped a little bit in terms of, looking across the chart at 2021 through 2023, you had some normalization back when what we used to know in the 11.9s and the 13.4. You had the outcome of COVID where my take on it, but people were exceptionally tired and pressed. And I don't know that retirements, you'll see that data in a moment, went up dramatically, but in general, people were opting out of careers, much more so than they had in the past. And that number spiked. It looks like we're returning to normalcy. The other thing that has helped dramatically, without question, in terms of retention, is the actions of this board in terms of our pay rates. It's put us in a highly competitive position, and it's allowed us to impact our attrition. I don't have any doubt about that whatsoever. So, if you take a little bit of a deeper dive, and you look at teacher exits and teacher retirements, you can again see that those numbers, as they go from '21, '22, '22, '23, and '23, '24, it did drop a little bit in teachers from 671 in the prior year to just over 500 this year. Those parentheses numbers under teacher retirements, that is 115 of 747 of those teacher exits were actually retirements, and that's 15% of that population. And then, the same thing going down. So, this most recent year, 79 teacher retirements were part of the 508 at 15%. So, 12% to 15% seems to be a fairly standard number. When you look at the total number of employee exits, and that includes teachers and all other positions, that retirement number is a little bit higher in the past year at 17. So, we may be, again, feeling just a little bit still of that overhang from the COVID era, but I do anticipate that the other data is telling us that that is returning to normal for the most part. So, this slide will give you some big-picture outcomes of the summer as well as the previous year in recruiting metrics. So, we filled over 1,000 jobs this summer with external applicants. About 500 jobs, in addition to that, were filled by internal transfers, people getting opportunities within the district to do other things, often with new opportunities and sometimes promotions. 127 of our ESAR employees were able to be transferred into full-time, non-ESAR positions. We expanded the bridge subprogram, as you've heard a little bit, just from Texas Teachers to UTA, so that we have two sources of candidate flow instead of just the one. That's helpful. Our teacher attrition is actually down, when you look at the numbers from '21 to '14, that's a 31% drop. So, that's pretty substantial in one particular year. Our new hire processing time, as Cliff mentioned a moment ago, for teachers is down 27%. And we've got about 40% fewer teacher openings on day one this year from the prior year. So, 238 in '723 and 146 in '724. Now, I don't want to give you an impression, and I would hope there's an understanding, but I'll make sure and say this out loud. It doesn't mean that we had that many classrooms that didn't have teachers in them whatsoever. It meant that the full-time certified staff, not having to rely on substitutes in particular, those were the openings that were remaining. We'd like that number to be zero, and we're doing the best we can to move that direction as quickly as possible. And a good improvement this year, it needs to continue to improve as we go forward. And that put us in a position that with full-time certified staff and bridge teachers, we had 96% or so of our positions filled on day one. A lot of that was aided, to be transparent as well, the market is better. The applicant pool is better. I'd like to say, and I do believe that we've done a lot of good things, but it's a Congress of that, and the reality of most school districts had a much richer pool of certified teachers to look at this year, in some part due to the ESAR end and that population coming back into the applicant pool, and in some part based on the economy. It's been my experience that when economies are uncertain, I don't necessarily think it's bad right now, but when they're uncertain, people have a tendency to stay put. it's bad right now, but when they're uncertain, people have a tendency to stay put. I think all those things contribute. And then you put in place the kind of pay structure that the district has approved over the last several years, and those three things together absolutely put us in a position to be more successful. And then finally, substantial improvement for our bus driver and our security positions. The partnership with those departments has been outstanding, huge progress, and helpful to make sure that we're serving students. Looking forward, an evolving relationship with UTA's Alt-Cert program. They just started that. If you're not familiar, this is their first year. We were effectively one, if not their first client. And what they bring to the table, separate and apart to date from what we'd experienced with Texas Teachers, is a very robust and deeper development program, excuse me, development program for those staff members when they get here. So it's not just about taking people that are working their way through their, through the certification system and saying, okay, you're in the role. That's not going to be successful. They need supports. To the credit of our academics team, they've done a lot of that with our previous placements that have come from Texas Teachers and otherwise. UTA is bringing a lot more to the table with those resources to make sure that those people are successfully being prepared as they complete that CERT program. Reinforced annual recruiting strategies by position type. Cliff talked about that a little bit, but going forward, absolutely, our focus has to be on SPED and bilingual recruitment strategies. And the reality is, the market is just not rich and deep in terms of the volume, and we've got to figure out a very structured way to grow our own. And there are ways to do that, and we're going to work on it, and we're going to come to the table with it and try and make an inroad on that. Our interview process partnerships with department supervisors, as I mentioned, particularly with transportation, has been extremely helpful. Marketing of the competitive pay rates, talked about that. And then program recommendations to develop supervisor-employee relationships and support retention. And that may sound like it's even going off on a different topic, but it's not. Because when it comes to retention, and if you don't have retention issues, you don't have the recruitment issues because you don't have to fill the positions, in the same volume anyway. That, just as the number-one factor that's most important for a student experience is the experience of their classroom teacher, without question, without question, the data consistently shows the number-one reason people are satisfied or not at work, the number-one reason they're willing to consider to leave or not, although there's others. But number-one is their relationship with their supervisor. And so the more work we do there, the more we pay attention and listen to what's good and make sure we do more of it, and what's maybe needs some development, and make sure that that's addressed, we will have an impact on recruitment and retention as well. So that is the presentation. I greatly appreciate your time, and we will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Cale. Do we have trustees with comments or questions? Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, President Chapa. Mr. Cale, I just want to say thank you to you and to your team. This doesn't happen overnight, and it doesn't happen by itself. Going out to those universities before the students even graduate and working with them and trying to get them to come to AISD, there's a lot of work that goes into what you do. It's not just something that happens over the summer. You start way in advance with interviews and going out to universities, and I just want to thank you. And I think there have been more teachers in the classroom on day one this year than ever before, and that's amazing.
Thank you.
But I just want to thank you. I want to thank you and your team for your hard work.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Mr. Wilbanks.
Thank you, President Chapa, and thank you, Mr. Cale. Going back to the last slide. So you identified the need in bullet number two to identify both SPED and bilingual recruitment. I know our colleagues and our neighbors in Dallas and some of the other districts in Texas have found some success, although maybe limited, with thinking outside the box and recruiting outside the country in Central, South America, and Mex, and other Spanish-speaking countries. Have we looked at those kind of programs and their efficacy?
We have. We have a limited number right now of teachers actually here on visas from Spain. It was through one of the region's programs sponsored by them. And to the credit of our SPED department, they were very passionate about trying it, and we partnered on that. Those teachers are here with us, and to the best of my knowledge, they're being very successful. There's pros and cons. I think it's good to pilot anything before it goes large-scale to make sure that you understand what's working and what's not, so that if it's working, you can expand on the positives, obviously, and stay away from the detractors. But the pros and cons of immigration, I probably sponsored 30 to 40, maybe more, folks on H1, B1s, L1s in my career. And what I've learned is that if it's very targeted, it can be successful. It can also be expensive. And the idea of making sure that it's more than just similar to what we're talking about in another scenario a moment ago, you can't get the folks here and just say, okay, you're here, good luck. It's a huge adaptation for people culturally, regardless of the country they're coming from. And so the amount of time and resources it takes to invest to make them successful, not because they're not great people, but because there's an adaptation, not just culturally, but even to the work itself, as it differentiates from the same career in a different country, and it has those differences, requires effort and time. So we're looking at it very carefully. We're going to watch the program pilot that's going on with the folks from Spain, see what we can learn from it, and see how we can expand on it where it makes sense.
Okay, great. My other question is around our Alt-Cert teachers. You gave a lot of great data, and it looks like we're heading in the right direction in terms of retention rate. But we know across the state that retention rate of Alt-Cert teachers and instructors is extremely high. Do you know what our rate for that population of recruits is?
So what I do know, a data point I thought this question might come up, is it's not as high as we'd like in terms, and I'm not going to call it retention as much as the data that I'm going to refer to here, is conversion. So how many of the folks that came in as bridge have actually converted to full-time certified staff with us? Because we, being a relatively new program, we have two categories of people, well, maybe three. You've got the folks who came and left, didn't finish. You've got the folks who came and didn't finish but have transitioned into full-time substitutes outside the bridge program because it's a one-year program. And so if they're willing to stay in that long-term substitute role, and the pay is differentiated, et cetera, then there's no reason to lose that continuity of staff as they continue to finish their CERT. But there are quite a few folks in that. And then there's the fully, we brought them on board and they've now converted to the certified role. And of 325 during the 23, 24 school year, 83 have converted to full-time certified staff. That's the data that I have in front of me. That doesn't mean that there are not additions to that that are also in that long-term subrole. But you're right, it is not a perfect scenario in terms of a conversion, and it doesn't mean it has to be static there. There's probably things we can do to help that. The UTA relationship is absolutely the right step in that direction because they come to the table with additional resources to support those people through the process. And other vendors we've used, maybe not as strong in that area, as opposed to producing candidates and having a little bit more, anyway, of arms-length support. And I think there's going to be a direct correlation between what we see in retention and conversion rates and the amount of supports that those staff members are getting as they're finishing up their CERTs and the program itself.
Yeah. I misspoke earlier. I said retention, but I meant attrition.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or turnover rate. But yeah, yeah. But in general, the turnover rate or the attrition rate for Alt-Cert is, and no CERTs are, much higher, right?
They are.
Yeah.
And it makes sense because there are people that are at very early stages of their careers trying to determine if this is what they want to be doing.
Yeah. And do you know what the cost to train? I mean, it sounds like we give a lot of support to those folks. What's the cost, or have we looked at the cost to train?
Haven't monetized it yet in that regard. It's certainly an important question. What we have is a couple different relationships with the two primary providers that we've been using, Texas Teachers and UTA. And there's a cost per seat. I don't want to misquote it, but I'll be happy to get it to you later. And the cost per seat, where we, in the district, select portion of the bridge program, you know, that subset that you saw on the bar charts, where we're paying for their certifications, that's the expense we're aware of at the moment. But you're right, there is absolutely an inferred cost for training and development, and we haven't monetized it yet.
Yeah, it'd be, I mean, I know you hear figures from $15,000 to $27,000. And what we hear, I don't know what the numbers that were presented at the Public Ed Committee a couple of weeks ago, but something like, you probably have them at your fingertips, but out of that population, something like 50% leave within, or 60% leave within the first year, and a much higher percentage leave within five years. That's a lot of cost for a lot of churn. And that's one thing I'd be concerned with, we're doing better than that, than what our colleagues across the state are reporting. You know, there is a dearth of teachers entering the pipeline. Retirement's, we've got to think outside the box, but anything we can do to minimize that high cost and still get trained, qualified
Yeah.
...teachers in that classroom. It's a tough, it's a tough problem to solve, so.
Yes, sir.
But thanks for the presentation. A lot of great stuff.
Thank you.
Looks like we're in the right direction.
My pleasure.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Wilbanks. We'll move on to Ms. Richardson.
Mr. Cale, thank you for your presentation tonight.
Hold on. Here we go.
Hi.
Sorry about that.
Thanks, Mr. Cale.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Peake, thank you for your help as well. I know that we get presentations ahead of time before board meetings, and so we're able to look in these a little bit and develop questions. Some I was able to send to you in an email and already get responses back, which I appreciate that. And if nothing else, it begins a dialogue for us to keep growing with and with our colleagues and superintendent. One of the things I wanted to ask you about, to share and gain a little bit more insight is, when we are looking, on the slide that Mr. Wilbanks talked about a little bit, just talking about our recruiting program and our bridge substitutes to visit that one, slide four and five, when we are going to these universities and we're going to attend up to 13 job fairs in DFW in central Texas, what other areas are we going to? Because as we all know, Texas is the largest state, at least we all think it is in our minds, and it's a great, big state to choose from. Where are we going besides just these 13 universities to recruit from?
So the 13 universities, in terms of which schools we're going to, we also go to some region job fairs. However, there's a diminishing return in the spread of resources at the point where you go too broadly. We've learned a few things. We've learned that geographical location makes a huge difference in teacher recruiting. And every university, the community that surrounds it, has teacher openings, by definition, public school teacher openings. And I'll give you an example. A few years ago, we wanted to test the idea of going to South Texas to recruit for bilingual staff, and felt like there was a greater pool of applicants, qualified applicants, coming out of universities that had the bilingual skills and potentially could help us solve that problem. We certainly invested the right number, in my opinion, amount of resources in it to make sure it was successful, and there was just a general lack of interest in relocation. And we've learned that from that example, as well as a multitude of other examples, including in SPED, where we've gone to both national and regional conferences, and the interest is just not there consistently with regard to people saying, yep, I want to be in education, but I want to move away from home. That doesn't mean there aren't anomalies. It doesn't mean we all don't know somebody who would or did do that. But by and large, that's the result we get. So when we say 12 or 13 universities, and you take the staff that we have, we focus on the geographical locations that we know that those applicants are going to be interested and willing in coming to work in Arlington ISD. And so, you know, the list includes TCU, DBU, Texas Women's University, UNT, UTA, Baylor, Texas State, Carrollton State, Paul Quinn, Texas A&amp;M Commerce, University of Dallas, and UT Dallas. Those are all universities that we have absolutely in the last year or couple of years been at for purposes of driving awareness of our opportunities and relationships and applicant flow. It's just that it is a challenge in terms of the number of people who are in the programs who are interested in coming into the field, but we're making progress.
My concern is that, because we're here in the metroplex, and we are competing, just like we've talked about before, before we discussed it was security officers. We were all trying to staff our unfunded mandate. Well, now we're all trying to recruit teachers from the same area. We're all here in the same area. And with that mindset, I just wonder, because you did point out that it's gone up our numbers because of, we are able to recruit better staff because of the pay increase, because of things in our district that we are doing right, in that if it didn't work several years ago, is what I hear you say. Several years ago, we were also dealing with the pandemic and coming out of COVID. What could it look like now if we explored options like Texas Tech? We know is a great teaching school. That's where a lot of people go for education degrees. What would it look like to go back down to the University of Houston in different areas? And do we, as a district, do we have to think, do we need to think bigger than our small area because all of these other neighboring schools are also trying to fight for this exact same group of people?
Yeah. First of all, I'm willing to try anything, and I'm willing to be very creative. I just want to balance that with not relearning some of the things that we've painfully learned with the investment of resources that haven't paid off. Texas Tech is an example, based on the nature of where it's at and the density of that population versus the number in the program that are coming out. That could be a good example. They could now start to pay some dividends. I don't disagree with that. However, I don't think that the philosophy that I mentioned has changed when it comes, for example, to Houston. We've had multiple examples where we've made efforts to pull from South Texas, and it just has not been successful. And so I want to focus my resources and my efforts on the areas. I actually hate fishing for, as irrelevant as that is, but I hate fishing. And one thing I do know about fishing, sorry for those that like fishing, one of the things I've learned is you've got to fish in a lake where there's fish. And I want to go where there's fish. And I also have an adage, which is, there don't have to be, this may not be the best, but there don't have to be enough teachers for everybody else. There just have to be enough for Arlington ISD. We have to be better at recruiting the pool that's there, but we have to go to the pool that has fish in it. And so we're trying to balance those things with, of course, to your point, the creativity of, if there's something else that we can try, we should, and test and learn and grow on the things that work and pull back from the things that don't.
One of the other things that we've talked about before and discussed is that, looking at recruiting teachers, new teachers to our district who mimic our own demographics of our schools and our students, because we do have a diverse population here, are we utilizing schools like HBCUs, schools like that, that we know students need to see themselves in their teachers?
So the diversity of the population of applicants that comes out of a UTA is very diverse, and it's in our backyard. And so that helps us solve two problems. It helps us solve the problem that you're mentioning, and it helps us solve the problem of not creating the relocation issue. One of the schools I mentioned a moment ago that we've been to in the last few years, not last year, but the last few years, Paul Quinn. A lot of the HBCUs are actually outside of the metroplex, which creates the challenge of what we've been talking about, which is the relocation barrier in terms of, we're happy to recruit, we're happy to be there. But I can tell you the real-life experience of being at a career fair, not in an HBCU, for example, but at an out-of-area, is that you'll go from the range of having little to no interest and people even stopping to talk to you, to politely talking to you but having absolutely no follow-up despite the fact you were there all day, and you talked to 30 or 40 people. So it's not that I don't appreciate and intend to make sure that we're certainly addressing diversity to the greatest extent that we can. I just think we're able to do it with our local, with our local resources.
Okay. I will follow up with you on that more, but thank you for answering
Of course.
...that question. I appreciate it. One of the other things that I had made a note about was with our bridge substitutes, and it was more of a statement than a question to you. I know that often it shows that a lot of our highest-need schools need teachers who are very well-prepared. And I appreciate the fact that in our district, that we are trying to put qualified teachers in those positions to support our staff and our school and our students, to give them high results. And I just want to make sure that we continue to do that when we focus on that with our bridge substitutes, is that we create, we have equity for our students across the district with that type of employment.
Ms. Richardson, so I agree with you. And I will tell you that last year, we became very became very conscious of the schools with greater socioeconomic needs had a pretty direct correlation to the amount of turnover. So, the amount of turnover is up, the amount of positions you have to fill, the more difficult it is based on availability of applicant pool, and there's a potential to put too many bridge developing teachers in those programs. We paid attention to that, it certainly was helpful that, that the applicant pool of certified teachers grew, but we were also monitoring very closely from that experience to make sure that we're not overstaffing particularly those campuses that are in more socioeconomic need disproportionately with bridge teachers. I just want to tell you, I recognize that, and we're paying attention to it.
I appreciate that. I do think that we, as a district, are very thoughtful about our schools, and we want to have equity for all of our campuses.
Absolutely.
And we want to make sure that we think of every single student every day. We talked about it today in our governance meeting and with our slab students, that it's important that at the end of the day, as trustees, that we are doing what is best for every child in our district. And I just want to keep that at the forefront of our mind when we're looking at things like this.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, Mr. Cale, Mr. Peake. I first want to echo what's already been said by Ms. Fowler and Ms. Richardson. I really appreciate you putting together all of this data and giving us a presentation that is, it's, it's telling us the narrative that we need using data over time, and it's responsive to the questions that we've, we've posed to you within the past few months. And I appreciate also the slide about the processing time, why it takes that window of time to process an applicant for hire, and also how even that has been improved. Because, you know, we, we hear a lot, and we get a lot of questions out in the community of people who are potential applicants, and even though that's not our role at all, that's one of the things that we bring to you because it's what we get a lot of questions about. Why does it take so long to process applicants? And as we continue to get those questions, the information that you've given us as trustees gives us very necessary context, so I appreciate that. My question, and I do apologize if you, if you touched on this, but I wanted to get more information about, I, I know there is a lot of efforts being made for general recruitment. We're using ZipRecruiter, we're leveraging our visibility at job fairs, we have great and growing partnerships with UTA, but I'm curious about what, what efforts are being made to get the word out about our competitive compensation? Because every year since I have been on the board, we have offered that cross-the-board four percent raise, and this is, it's to the point now where it is something that our whole board unanimously is passionate about, we want to take care of our people and we want to reward our hardworking teachers and staff. But how can we ensure that the, the applicants, the top quality educators around us are fully aware that we pay more than other districts that surround us?
It's a great question. So, our intention, I think, has two prongs to that answer. The first prong is that every time we do, one of the things we didn't mention here, because it was just, I think, maybe overkill to put that level of content maybe initially, but the, the marketing campaigns and all the details that come in marketing campaigns and the communications department does such a good job as we drive these, these, our own career fairs and go to other career fairs, we build in key messaging, including our compensation. And so, so there's an awareness, because that's the point where people are listening, I'm going to a career fair, why should I go? And, and you're giving them a reason to go. And so, anytime we have an opportunity to market anything, it's an absolute element that we have and will continue to include. The second element is, we're fortunate to have the UEA publications that go out consistently. And we know we've looked at them, but I can assure you that the rest of the, of the community, educational community looks at them as well. So, I would be surprised, I, I certainly could be wrong, but I would be surprised if you had a conversation with most people who have ever considered even looking, if they didn't know Arlington was at the top tier. The reason I characterize it that way is because in education, the data also says that after five years, a teacher in a district is, has a very low likelihood of leaving. And, and so, our opportunity is to, to get teachers from other districts rather than grow your own, in addition to that short window of time I talked about earlier, is to actually get those folks that are at the, if they finished one year, but they haven't finished five. Because at that point, and the reason I bring it up in this context is because people have interest when they're interested in doing something different as applies to them, it's understandable, and that's when they're paying attention. And so, I think if you ask somebody who is maybe at twelve years and in a different district, they may or may not know. But I think if you ask somebody who's in the one to four-year range, they almost definitely would know, would be my, my assumption.
Okay. So, and I do have to give UEA a shout out, we appreciate that chart every year. But are we, does that mean we're doing a marketing campaign right now?
No, it means they come typically right before our events. So, our, our big teacher career fair, the reason that, that, and I need to give credit where credit's due, we, we work really hard to do a good job, but the reality is we could never do any of this by ourselves, and the campuses and OSL have done an outstanding job in partnering with us and growing that event. And we have hundreds of people that come to our career fair, in my opinion, from that product, we're in, we're in a better position than most commercial career fairs when it comes to the volume and the quality of candidates that came through our teacher career fairs this year. That was in large part because of the marketing efforts that were made by Ms. Foster's group.
Awesome. I just hope that we can continue to get the word out, shout it from the rooftops, because again, that was no easy feat. There will be, you know, sacrifices made elsewhere, but it is a consistent priority of our board to build the culture that, that makes people want to get up and go to work and serve kids every day, but we also know pay does matter.
Absolutely.
And so, we want to make sure that they're looking at a school district to join a family that offers those. And finally, I was, you might not have this in front of you, but I was going to ask, I know that you, you provide the board with new hires and resignations, and you guys give us that great report where we can even drill down to names, reason for, reason for leaving the district, and number of years. And our board looks at that very closely, we monitor that actively. I want to ask, ask you guys as a staff, as a team, if we can start getting reports on the current fill rate, just general fill rate? Because that's an additional piece of data that I think we could, you know, keep our eye on as, just as a board for our information? Is that, is that a fair ask?
Sure, so, so I want to make sure I understand. So, for example, if there's thirty-five-hundred teachers and there's three, I hope not, but and there's three-hundred-and-fifty openings, it's a one percent vacancy rate and a ninety-nine percent fill rate, is that?
Right, because I always appreciate the, the numbers, but proportionally, I, I would love a percentage, and I would like, I would be curious as a trustee to monitor how that percentage fluctuates.
Yeah, I think I did improper math a moment ago, but yes, I understand.
No, that's okay, no, that's okay. But I just, I really do appreciate y'all. I know it's, it's never a not busy time for you and your team.
Happy to do it.
I appreciate your leadership and how you guys care for our people.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro, Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, President Chapa. I just wanted to give a, I guess, a shout out to AISD Bridge Program. I've known people that have gone through that program, I know people that are in the program now, and they are getting awesome training. Those bridge teachers had to report even earlier than
Right.
teachers did. They got weeks of training on all kinds of different things. They also get a mentor teacher that's not only on the campus, but is with their different discipline. And I think, I think we're doing a really good job with this bridge program, and I've seen a lot of good teachers come out of it. But, but I just want to say thank you to the people that are involved, because I know those people are getting good training and also good training on their home campuses.
Yeah, and thank you very much, and, and again, we don't do any of this by ourselves, we're fortunate. Those outcomes are based on outstanding partnerships with academics and outstanding partnerships with OSL, and it's the collective efforts that have those kind of results, so thank you.
I think, I, I think it's such a great job and such a good idea that we're doing that. And not only, you know, the UTA, you know, they've got their program, and Arlington Baptist, everybody has their programs, but I love the fact that you're accepting people who really want to be teachers and helping to train them and, and training them basically for free.
Yeah.
So, it's a great program, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Any other trustees with comments or questions? I have just a few, Mr. Cale.
Yes, sir.
So, you, you briefly explained it during your presentation, but could you reiterate and help me understand better what a bridge sub is? And sometimes we use bridge sub or bridge teacher, is there any distinction there? And how they differ from a teacher that's in more of a traditional alternative certification program?
Absolutely. So, the proper term is bridge substitute. We don't want to call them a teacher because a teacher has, and I say we, I'm talking about me, HR, we don't want to call them a teacher per se because that has the implications of certification through TEA, and they are not yet certified. So, they are a bridge substitute. And these are folks who have already enrolled in an alternative certification program, and we are giving them an opportunity to complete that alternative certification process with their provider, and whether that be Ecap or Texas Teachers or University of Texas as an ALTCert program, they're able to, in parallel, get experience in the classroom where, as a substitute, where they would ultimately transition to a full-time teacher as soon as that certification is complete. It's a one-year program, and in that one-year program, they're expected to, to complete, now not all do, and if they don't, we give them an opportunity to move into a long-term substitute role where there are needs, if they're able to stay with us, maintain them as a candidate, but in a different capacity with different ramifications for, for pay rates and et cetera. A subset of a bridge substitute is called district select. Those are the portion of the population where we say, you've applied specifically for sponsorship, and we're actually, as a result of an application process and a screening process, we've selected you to not only be a bridge substitute, but we're also, for district select, applicants going to pay their certification fees for them to help them with that process as a sponsor. Did that help?
That helps, and I'm, because I think, when I, it's been a while since I was in the classroom, but I went through an alternative certification program, and I'm just trying to relate how that works with my experience. I know the law has changed quite a bit in, in the time since I taught, but is it still possible for someone to be in an alternative certification program and be in a classroom but not a substitute?
So, the, the traditional alternative certification staff, again, Ecap or otherwise, Texas Teachers or otherwise, that isn't in this type of program we've been talking about, those folks had typically or historically completed their ALTCert and then gone to work, having gotten their SOE and being ready to effectively get their certification and teach. So, is it possible that any of them, then or now, could have independently said, well, I'm in the program, I want to go be a sub at the same time? Absolutely, they could, but without the structure of a district program, it's hard to find your place and how that works. And, and so, we effectively took what we thought was a resource, and we tried to create a funnel to make sure we took the best advantage of it. So, the traditional ALTCert usually finished and then moved in, and in this case, there's a little bit of parallel path between the completion of this, of the cert program while they're also substituting. And, and the transition into the same classroom, hopefully, when that certification's complete, so the continuity is there with the students.
So, is it, I assume that we compensate these folks on the long-term subscale?
They are compensated slightly above the long-term subscale, but below the certified teacher scale.
Okay. And would it, I assume that one reason that we, we use these folks is because it's just simply not possible to find enough fully certified, you know, regularly certified teachers from traditional teaching programs?
The program was implemented absolutely because we needed to fill a void, and we needed to do it in a way that would grow our own, and at the moment, this was the best evolution. I'm sure we can continue to improve, but that was the intent, yes.
And I, I'm just looking at the numbers for your full-time positions filled by position type and looking at teachers. So, the bridge substitutes, you know, you see, started at two-sixty, went up to three-twenty-four, dropped, I mean, almost by, I can't do math, I'm going to call that two-thirds to one-thirty-eight. So, we are still, we are not filling most of our teaching positions with bridge substitutes.
Correct. I'm not sure which slide you're looking at, but make sure, if you're looking at a slide that says year-to-date for current, that would be a partial number, that would just be a run rate as opposed to a total, that we are absolutely not filling most positions with, with substitutes. We have approximately twenty-eight-hundred teachers? Pardon me? I was doing so well there for a while. We have approximately thirty-six-hundred teachers, and a very, very low percentage of that is bridge teachers, but they're, they have been instrumental in helping us fill that gap from being close to fully staffed.
Can you, can you help me understand the difference between using bridge substitutes to grow your own is the, the way they used it? And then some districts are using a model called teacher residency? Can you sort of compare and contrast those for me, and, and what are the pros and cons? Or are they essentially the same thing?
To the best of my ability, sure. So, the, the teacher residency, I, I looked at it earlier on the TEA website. My interpretation of it, and I could probably get a little bit deeper understanding of it, to be honest with you, but my understanding of it is, it is a, it feels to me, anyway, like a program that's off to the side. It, it assumes, from my review to date, that it is a program that assumes that you have the capacity to independently run what I might call a mentorship program, what I might call an internship program, but that also requires incremental resources to support that. And so, what we've tried to do with the bridge sub, excuse me, bridge sub program, is get the best of both worlds, which is have, have that internship program while also filling a critical need that has not otherwise been addressed. So, I, I don't mean to be a distractor to the other program, but it feels like it has more of, it's off to the side, and it's nice, and it's great, and it's going to develop, and then I've got to figure out how I'm going to run that with resources while I'm also trying to fill vacant classroom positions.
Okay. Because I, I know that these are sort of different, it seems to me that there, like you said, there are different ways of getting at the same
They absolutely are.
problem and the same training issue and filling the same staffing
Yeah.
And I, I do want to just compliment you on that, I did not know until we received your, your slide presentation that we did the district select program and that we were able to help folks meet their alternative certification
Yes, yes.
costs. Because I, I can remember going through that myself when I had to front those, and that, that was a pretty substantial burden when I
It's expensive.
was going through it. How, I did have a question that, we mentioned that we have a partnership with Texas Teachers, and I, I know Texas Teachers is the largest program of its kind in the state, but there has been, in the last couple of years, some negative PR around that. Is there a reason that we use them in particular, and are we, is there any sort of concern about the quality of individuals and training that we're getting through that program?
So, there absolutely has been some less than favorable publicity about Texas Teachers. We've talked to them about it directly. I believe it's our responsibility to make sure that we just don't take anybody from Texas Teachers or any vendor for that matter. So, our internal screening processes, in my opinion, have, have done a fairly good job at correcting where there have been issues and making sure that we're bringing in quality applicants in that category of, of staff. Their volume and the size of their marketing capacity and organization has been something that had we just, for example, I'm very encouraged by what's going on with UTA, and I think it's going to grow significantly from where it's at. But if we had said, so we're, we're confident that we're just going to shut down Texas Teachers, I think we would have had substantial applicant flow issues this past season, recruiting season. So, it, I haven't noticed the kind of issues and any significance with the candidates that we're getting, consistent with what I've seen in the media, but I will tell you that we consistently also make sure that we do our part and we're screening appropriately, and, and I, I don't perceive it to be an issue currently.
Right, because I mean, you could have some folks coming out of a traditional certification program, and just because they've met, you know, they've got, become certified and they've jumped through the right hoops, it doesn't mean that they're going to be an effective teacher in the classroom
Right.
and part of our reviewing process would be, even though they're fully certified, to ferret that out on the front end, hopefully.
Yeah, correct. And I also believe in working with people, and I will tell you that we've given lots of feedback in this relationship, partnership with Texas Teachers, and sometimes they see it one way or we see it another, we're working through a pretty substantial volume, but they've been responsive, and they've, I, in my opinion, tried to be good partners. So, as long as that continues and the applicant flow is helpful, I don't think there's a reason to step away from it.
Okay. And you, we, you've mentioned grow your own, and, and there is, it wasn't part of your presentation, but I know it's out there, and I wonder if you could just speak to the sort of magnitude of how it's helping us out, but we do have a Ready Set Teach program. Can you talk about that just for a little bit, and, and sort of, how is that helping us fill this need that we're talking about?
We do, I think, I think there's more opportunity to grow that even beyond where it's at, you know, it's been around for a long time. We have, it used to be called Ready Set Teach, it's now evolved into a, a track at the Career Tech Center. And anybody who gets out of that program or matriculates out of that program is guaranteed is guaranteed an interview with the hiring principal when they finish their degree. And that's helpful. But as long as programs went around and as much as I absolutely have value in it, I think it exposes students early to what it's like to be a teacher. And what, you know, it's not maybe what you heard or actually experience it and start to learn what it's like to deliver curriculum and have classroom management. I think that there's just opportunity, I'm trying to be transparent. I think there's opportunity to take all the good work that's happening there. And we need to bolster those resources a little bit and give them more to work with so that we can drive greater student interest, so that we can really have a deeper pipeline from that path than we may have at the moment.
Okay. Do you have a sense of what the pipeline magnitude is right now? How many kids we got in it?
I I I'll get it for you.
Okay, I was just curious. So I have another set of questions around our sped openings and recruitment strategy. And I don't know if they're they're more appropriate for for you or for Mr. Peak.
I'll take a shot.
Okay. Well, it's really more of, I had a, so I sort of had a a general question of, are these vacancies sort of dispersed? I don't want to say randomly or evenly, but they're just sort of dispersed throughout the district. Or are most of these sped vacancies concentrated at particular campuses?
Well, my sense would be, and so this is a, this is a judgment based on the question. My sense is that we have a disproportionate need across different positions at our lower socioeconomic campuses. And we have a a need to do everything possible to make sure that all students are treated with the same level of quality education. And so when we have more openings at one set of campuses than another, it's our responsibility to figure out how to address that. I don't think sped positions per se are any different from one campus to another. I think that probably has the same attributes.
Okay. And so then that sort of leads into my next set of questions, which is, it, they're constant, it seems to be concentrated in campuses that we know are already harder to fill generally for there's reasons and there's higher turnover at those campuses. And that is probably what's driving some of the sped vacancy openings too. But an intentional part of our recruitment retention strategy has been to bolster our compensation. And you mentioned earlier that's certainly helping with attrition and certainly helping with recruitment. Does that seem, do you seem, do you see the same effect with our compensation strategy playing out with the sped positions as well? Or does that seem to be?
I think it has the same general effect for sure. But but I think the opportunity to, we're in very early stages of saying, what can we do to differentiate the value proposition for employment at lower socioeconomic campuses so that it balances out the level of attrition? And so therefore, the same level of continuity of instruction occurs. I think we're at early stages of that, but I think we're all aware that that's an opportunity for us.
And that's sort of, I wasn't quite going to go there directly, but that's eventually where I was going to end up and ask if that's, if that's something that we need to look at. And then I just had a question on, understanding that our sped teachers are compensated the same as a regular classroom teacher in terms of salary, but we do offer additional compensation in the form of a stipend. Is the competitiveness of our stipend in line with with most other districts? Is that something that's potentially creating some of the issues filling the vacancies or the number of vacancies? Or is, in your opinion, is that, that's just sort of, it's part and parcel of everything else?
I think the short answer is our stipends are competitive. We look at them every year. The question, though, the deeper question is, you know, there was a time, I've been here about pushing eleven years, almost, not quite. And when I got here, I had some outside forces tell me that bus drivers were paid competitively. And if I remember right, the bus driver pay was fourteen dollars an hour. And I was well aware at that time in private sector market what CDL drivers were making and a variety of other employers. But the answer was, well, it's competitive with other districts. And I said to that individual at the time, I said, so do other districts have a difficult? It was a loaded question because I knew the answer. Do other districts have a hard time recruiting bus drivers? Well, yes. So our stipends are competitive with other districts. I think the review and the and the consideration, I don't know the answer to, but needs to be looked at, is, is it enough to differentiate us from those districts to be at a different level to pull? Because the reality is you're trying to pull from a pool that does not have enough for everybody right now. There's only two ways to do that. You got to be better at attracting and you got to be better at growing your own. And that applies to sped and it applies to all these other positions we've been talking about too.
Okay. Because that, and that, that's, that that answers my question exactly. And I think we reached a similar point several years ago now. But when we were having a big problem with with substitutes and being able to get substitutes to fill in. And we had the question of, well, you know, how's our pay? And it was, well, it's competitive. And then we, you know, I think we were the first district to really dramatic, pretty dramatically increase substitute pay. And that seemed to have some effect on it. So I wonder.
Which, by the way, our current substitute pool has one thousand two hundred and seventy-six people in it.
That's great. That's not where we were a few years ago.
Thank you for giving the opportunity to say that.
Always happy to do that.
One thousand two hundred and seventy-six.
So my last question, from your summary key metrics slides, I noticed that you put on here that the hundred and twenty-seven ESER employees transferred to full-time non-ESER positions. And I, it's not in here, but I know that you sent us an email a couple of weeks ago as ESER was formally ending, that you had made final outreach to the folks who were ESER-funded but had not heard back from in terms of what their employment intentions were going forward. And it was maybe a one or two dozen that you didn't hear back from hopefully. There was a lot of, I think, confusion earlier on in the year, whether or not ESER-funded positions ending were, as some people characterize them, layoffs or whether they were more contract ending. And it was certainly, certainly the latter. And and we were communicating at the time, a lot of vacancies opened up in the summer. We're trying to accommodate as many as we can. We anticipate accommodating most people who want to stay in AISD. I know this is not fully the number of ESER employees that we had on staff at one time. But over the course of transitioning folks and offering opportunities to folks coming off of ESER, is it fair to say that it, for most ESER-funded positions, if they wanted to stay with Arlington ISD, it might not be in the exact same role, but there was a position for them? We were able to accommodate them if they wanted to?
We were able to place the vast majority of ESER folks who were actually looking to stay with the district.
Okay. All right, that's the last question I have.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Dr. Smith?
I just wanted to thank our HR team and Mr. Cale. I think he was a very demure approach tonight to this presentation. And I think their efforts have gone, should be widely applauded because every school district in the state has been in this exact same situation right now, no matter the size. And I think it's important to note, we feel it even larger because of the scale of our situation in Arlington ISD than a lot. But it doesn't mean that we aren't, that that we're alone on an island. We actually all were in the same boat for a few years. And to be able to be at this point where we're seeing the the retention rate improve and the number of people actually want to come to Arlington ISD, thanks in part to board efforts. But also I think there's efforts internally on culture pieces that have been worked on as well. And I think it's, it's a balance. We know that it's not either or when it comes to compensation or culture. It's actually both and. And I think we have to constantly remember, if we're leading the pack in compensation and we still see a retention rate that, or turnover rate that we're not happy with, then we have to look at other factors as well. So I appreciate our HR team's approach and the thoughtful dialogue from our trustees tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. And I'm always appreciative of how how very mindful Dr. Smith and my colleagues are in in complimenting the work of our staff. Mr. Cale, Mr. Peak, Ms. Johnson, thank you so much. It was very good information. And that will conclude our report on recruit and retention. And we'll move on back to Dr. Smith for our 2024, 2025 district goals report.
I almost forgot that I I still have more to talk about tonight. So are we good? Do we need a break? Are you all, you all good to, are you good? Okay. All right, let's talk district goals. So this is the one that Scott was going to present a little bit ago. And I'm appreciative to get the chance to actually be able to talk to you a little bit about this tonight. But I'm going to try and do less talking and have you do more talking. So I apologize for the burden to be on you. But purpose of this is to continue to land on our goals for the upcoming year. And I'm going to use that word goals and and change it a little bit on you throughout this presentation. And I'll tell you why as we keep going. We've started talking about these in our board meetings. I've asked you individual feedback and we have gotten leadership input. And so that leads us to the next step in the process. This is just an overview, the background through May, June, and August meetings of the Board of Trustees. And in superintendent's report during those meetings, we've talked about the development of goals. I've heard you all in various formats, whether it be just providing me written feedback or in our dialogue. And also our our leadership team has provided that as well. On the fifteenth of August, we had some discussion around these three questions and specifically got into this notion of picture of success. And I'd asked you to say, in in the, in the realm or the the bucket of academic progress, what do you really want to see for the future? And these were the things that I synthesized from your feedback. And we went over during the presentation in August. We had some feedback from you all, but there wasn't much disagreement. I think most of you at that time in the board meeting said, you know what? For the most part, I think this captures the feedback that we've given you over the last couple of months. And so our job was to take this information and take it to the next step. And that's to to develop what I called at the time, goal statements. But I'd like to, I'd like to shift that a little bit. I sensed some hesitancy with some of you about calling them goals. I think you've been wired in the SMART goal format for a very long time. And I get it. That's every trustee training that you go to, you hear about that. So I I would propose that maybe we, instead of calling them goals, we talk about them as priorities. So what are the priorities of the Board of Trustees based on your work as elected officials in Arlington ISD? And I hope that that helps us keep the conversation going a little bit more as we move forward. So Board and senior staff have provided us input on the priorities based on our last discussion. Dr. Collins actually had some posters up on the fifth floor and asked people to come, provide some written comments on those based on what you all said. And from that information, we're here at a time where we're going to review some of these priority statements to see if they match what you all would like. And then we'll, I'm going to ask you some tough questions on how we focus our work. Because again, if we focus on everything, we're probably not going to focus on anything as an organization. So tonight's discussion really revolve around these three questions. Does the priority language capture the big work of the district from a trustee perspective? And it says reference to blue box, that's on the next slide. You'll see what the blue box means in just a minute. It's not something from a TV show or any kind of reference like that, I promise. It's about the next slide. And then, does the added category address your feedback? I think it was President Chapa that brought up some additional feedback in there about wanting to remain competitive regarding compensation. And so tried to figure out how to weave that into a a resource discussion that we'll hit in just a minute. And then last question, can we prioritize the three to five areas? And I don't, given the nine thirty-three PM, I don't know that we'll get to the prioritization tonight. But I think it's worthwhile diving into these priorities. So the bullets that you see below the blue box were your sentiments that we went over during the last meeting. And what you see in the blue box is my effort to make sure that I captured in a priority statement the essence of what the board said. So under academic progress, empower each and every student to learn at the highest levels and demonstrate growth in academic knowledge and skills that I think hits much of the feedback that you said and provides us a clear, action-oriented statement that we could build off of. Safety and discipline, you see, culture, you see, student experiences, you see. I won't belabor and read every one to you, but just know, all of those bullet points underneath were what we discussed in the last meeting. That was based on your individual feedback that you had given me. And then my effort in the blue box was to actually put that into a clear, easy-to-read statement that that covers the sentiments that you've all have said. The next slide was the remaining three. We initially had seven priorities there that I think you all had mentioned. And you see that how those priority statements worked out. And then finally, in that last category, and that's the one that was added under resources. And it was based on the feedback that the President Chapa had given. And that I think we've had in other discussions as well. I know this board to be sound fiscal managers. And because you've done a good job managing resources for a number of years, we've been able to do things that are really important to the school district. And so that idea of maximizing resources is an important one to continue to talk about and prioritize. I I believe from a trustee perspective, one, to pay people competitively, as President Chapa said. But also the notes that we talked about when we adopted our budget this year. We, we're going to be in a tough situation and we have to figure out how we constantly maximize our resources when we're dealing with a budget deficit because the state hasn't funded us appropriately. So I think that is the addition. And what I would like to do is open it up to trustee conversation about any ideas that you have from the priority statements in the blue boxes. And if those words adequately convey the sentiments of the Board of Trustees, if we were to use those as priority statements in our planning.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Any trustees with comments? I'm seeing no requesters.
Can I see the other slide again? Sorry.
Okay, so I will, I will just kick off some discussion. Mr. Will Banks, thank you.
So just to be clear, we're not prioritizing because.
So that, so that was a question that a few other people had done.
She just had.
So.
I'm good with if you want to. I I have an interesting feeling that that could be a very long conversation. So it all depends on what the board's wishes are. I'm here for the night. So however you want to approach it is fine with me.
I know two of us have plane tickets to Ann Arbor for tomorrow morning. And I have a lot of thoughts. So I think maybe I I should jot a few comments down. But I will, since I do have the mic, I'll take the opportunity to say, I I do like the switch to priorities. And one of the things in all of our school board training and that some of the other frame, governance frameworks that are solely focused just on student outcomes, which that should be our number one focus. But we as trustees, we have to adopt budgets and we need to evaluate the superintendent. And we need a a framework that has a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree view of a district, especially a district this large. And I like the fact that we're calling it priorities and that we are attempting to focus on areas that do have a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree scope. I also had this concern about three to five. Adding from seven to eight now, thank you, Mr. Chapa, gives me a little more heartburn. I think the budget and I, I mean, we've got it as our published priority for Darla and her team that we want to prioritize putting as much money into the classroom as possible and be physical, extremely conservative in how we spend money outside of the classroom. And I I don't know that for this purpose, it's certainly important. And it, we, you know, I will preach it from the rooftops. We are all about making sure we're competitive on teacher pay, but it's more than teacher pay. Mr. Cale just got up tonight and said that the number one reason why teachers leave is not how much they're getting paid. It's the culture in that supervisor or that principal or whatever leader they report to. And so that is, that is, I think we were clear during the hiring process, culture is important. I like how you've broadened it. But in one of my questions to you earlier in the week was, now that you've been here and you've done your listening tour, what are, what are those things that give you pause in your SWOT analysis that we need to triage right away in this first year coming up? And I would like to see us put more focus on our internal culture. Creating the culture of respect for the students, that's important too. But I need to know where, like, where, what are those areas in your SWOT analysis that need improvement, that we need to focus on?
I think it's a great question. And I, you know, just to be clear, listening tour isn't done. That that'll go on for years and we will continue to seek ways to provide feedback or to get feedback, excuse me, on our system and input from key stakeholders. Couple of things that I think really stand out to me, one is academic progress. And frankly, I wrote these statements, so, you know, David and I had spoken earlier in the week, or excuse me, Mr. Will Banks and I had spoken earlier in the week. I can promise you, my my words and sentiments are in here. This isn't just board feedback too. I'm working with you all in this. And I think academic progress is is one of the key things that we have to focus on. And why I bring that up first, we are a learning institution and it's. We are a learning institution and it's about the students, as we heard tonight. And I think we have to figure out ways to ensure that the academic growth, and I think growth is probably my preferred word in all of this, the academic growth for each and every student in our system is appropriate for that student. And that we're proud of that and that we can see that in the eyes of our kids and in our parents. And I think that has to be a priority, no matter where we stand. Because I think that's what we're about. That's what...
And I like how you have that one as the first one. Because that is, that is the most important one.
I think that goes hand in hand with that is culture. And there's a reason that student and staff are both in there. And I've heard loud and clear through our system that it's not just about how our staff feels a part of a family or team in the district. We want to continue to work on that. But we ultimately want, and I think I heard this in your sentiments as well, but I hear it on our campuses. We want a kid that walks in the door every day, he feels great about where they're going, and that they're a part of something that they get excited about and can continue learning. It's about the, we want to develop kids that are learners and continue to be challenged but appropriately supported. But it's a place of joy. And I think that that culture matters in that and that it overlaps with the student experiences as well. And so I think those are a couple of really important ones to me. I'd be remiss if I didn't say that, you know, the resources piece is one that I think the board has to consider. I don't want to beat a negative drum tonight, but we do have a $25 million budget deficit that was adopted this year. And that will grow unless our state does something different. And I think we have to balance that advocacy work with our state representatives, with our state legislators, senators, excuse me, so that we can make sure that they are adequately representing what we need. But we also have to act in the meantime. And frankly, some of the big work that we're going to have to do this year is address this. And I think it's important for us to do that. Part of the reason I'm asking you to adopt goals is to help us prioritize work. And the things that you adopt in these prioritized, or in these priorities are what's going to drive our work that we try and accomplish over the course of the year. So this work, the stuff that you're doing right now really matters to us because that's how we're going to allocate resources, time, and effort. And if we don't look at maximizing our resources in all of this in a time that we're faced with a pretty significant budget deficit, I think it would be amiss. And I think we've got to figure that out. And then the final thing that I'll mention, and it goes to the engagement piece. It has been clear since I have been here that we had a great strategic plan for years, but that I heard on campuses, from our trustees and from our community, that it might be time to refresh that strategic plan. And in order to do that, we have to work to engage the stakeholders in conversations about what we really want to achieve as a school district. And it's not just from this group. Although you're elected to represent the community, we have to go out and get community input for something like that. We have to engage people in different ways, maybe than we've ever engaged them before. And I think that effort is going to be a really important piece for us if we want to truly invest in setting direction for the next 10 years for the school district. Again, we've had great work done and it's our job to build on it, but now start to look forward about what we want to become for the future, not just what we have been. So those are the priorities based on the feedback that I have. I will have a presentation for you all as trustees eventually about, over the course of my time here, here's what I've seen, here's what I would like to prioritize, and here's how I see that playing out over the course of a couple of years. But for the purposes of this, that'd be my overview.
Well, I think that's perfect timing on what you talked about in engagement. Because I know my colleague, Ms. Haynes, has a question regarding that. So I'll yield the mic to her.
Ms. Haynes?
Well, thank you. I actually was going to speak to culture. It's going to go hand in hand with what I'm saying. I don't know if this is the opportunity to critique the wording or provide some feedback. I don't know if that, okay. So establish a culture of respect, support, and inclusion that challenges all students and staff to grow and improve together. So as a parent in the district, I think we're missing an important piece there. And it is important to me that it gets added. I think that it should say, challenges all students, staff, and families to grow and improve together. As a parent who's been a part of campuses that didn't have a great culture, it's all connected. And I think that we need to set a priority to establish a good culture for everyone that is essential to the success of our students. And families are a very important part of that. So I want to see families represented there in some capacity. The engagement piece, I also was hoping it spoke a little more to not just engaging community stakeholders broadly, but engaging, again, our families. I'm assuming we're looping families into the stakeholder piece there. I just, I really want to make sure we are prioritizing. I know that trustee Will Banks spoke about the culture of, you know, the internal culture. But a lot of us are living day in and day out in these schools with our kiddos. And the culture that we're experiencing as parents is not great. And so I want to see that prioritized.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Ms. McMurro.
Everything that's been said has been very valuable. Yes, to all. I wish that we could keep them all. But I know, as you said so eloquently, Dr. Smith, if everything's important, then nothing's important. And we don't want to, you know, get ourselves into a situation where we're doing all of this a mile wide and an inch deep. You made me, you pushed me to think about the resources. Because when I first saw this slide deck updated from last discussion, I was curious what you were going to say about that. And so I'm still kind of processing how that would come out in the wash if we shaved this down to three to five overarching priority buckets. But right now, I'm trying to look at all of this through the lens of not just where we want to go, but where we are now as a district. Because we are, we do have strengths that exist already in a lot of these areas. And I do think that a lot of this work will always be efforts being made. But I want to clarify something because I think that too, this will be key in our prioritization. We're looking at priorities for the upcoming academic year. Is that right, Dr. Smith?
I'd say the current year. The current year that we are in right now.
That's right. Okay.
And I would say this, is that I also don't want you to think of these as one and done.
A hundred percent.
When we're talking about priorities, I'm trying to get your sentiments that would extend beyond just a current year. Because I think in order to do meaningful work, we know that it's not usually done in one year. From here, and if you give me just one second, I'll make sure I point this out. The next steps would be for the board to actually adopt those priorities. And then, we would work to develop the key progress measure, which would be the annual target, the SMART goal format that we would bring to you all and say, these are the things, based on your priorities, that we believe we can accomplish this year and would be the most influential work of the school district. And typically, those are the goals that you would also put in my superintendent evaluation. What we agree on is the most important work and we resource those appropriately.
That is really important context for us to have. I appreciate you reiterating that. I'm just going to throw this out there, speaking for myself. If we're, you know, getting to where we can start calibrating around prioritization. So academic progress, it's been stated several times by several of you. I see that as a must-have. What we do, we're really trying to support the work being done in that classroom. And student achievement should always be top priority. And I appreciate you, Dr. Smith, for putting that first. I don't know if that was a coincidence that it's first, but to me, that should be first all the time. Safety and discipline, that's another one that I don't see not being a priority. And I, you know, I hope that that one makes it as well when we take a look at shaving this down to three to five. Culture, that's another one that I just think it's a must-have and it's a must-have now. And that, like you said, that work will never be done. My other hopefuls, and I know this is six instead of five. But I really think that we need to prioritize marketing because we have so many great stories to tell. And we need to attract and retain top-notch educators to put in front of our students. We cannot do that without publicizing the innovation, opportunities, and culture that defines our AISD story. I really, really hope that I can emphasize how we need to prioritize marketing as a district. Because I want to always shine a light on those stories. And I want to always make sure that we are celebrating all the hard work of our families, our teachers, our staff. Because it's remarkable what everyone does on the day-to-day for our children, and that's what our children deserve. And then, let's see. I also have down professional learning. I was wondering if we could, and you might not have the answer right now, Dr. Smith, but I don't know if professional learning would just remain the all-encompassing priority? Or if you wanted to just kind of say overarching what we offer our teachers, curriculum instruction or just professional learning? So that might be something to look at. But the reason why I hope we prioritize professional learning, because I love the bullet that says, model effective instruction. I think that that would kind of cover the student experience. Because if we offer our teachers the top-notch, rigorous, and relevant learning experiences that we expect for them to teach our kids, I think that not only are we helping them grow in their pedagogy, but we are also, we're hitting that student experience piece. And we're kind of covering both. So those are kind of what I hope graduate into our shortened list of priorities. Engagement is always important. The student experience is always important. But I do think that those go hand in hand with culture, safety and discipline, and providing professional learning for our teachers that model the learning experiences. We want them to offer our students. So those are all just, those are all just things that I wanted to share for y'alls consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. The lights had dimmed, but now the switchboard is lighting back up, further delaying Mr. Will Banks's trip. Including by Mr. Will Banks himself. Mr. Will Banks?
I just want to piggyback on something that Sarah said. And I think on the professional learning, if we could broaden that out to, you know, I'm looking at the Effective School Framework, which is a great framework, not just for those campuses that need targeted improvement. It's really what works on making an effective system, not just campus, but system. And, you know, at the core is effective instruction. And so changing, and then next to that, the other lever is curriculum and high-quality staff. So I think changing this to not just professional learning, but broadening it to making sure that we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum and that we're doing what we can to put the best product forward for our students in terms of creating the, whatever the other one on the previous slide was, a really engaging environment for those students, providing high-quality instructional materials, and the best teachers, best qualified teachers for those students. Because that's, in the end, speaking to parents, what we all want is the schools that our students deserve as parents. And I think focusing, you know, I'm an old product manager. I've said this before. Focusing on the product and are we putting the best product out there? Are we getting the, you know, the output with the kind of student success that we demand, you know? At a high level, we want all students graduating exceptionally prepared for college career in military. But what is the product that we're providing, actually service in that classroom? Are they getting high-quality instruction? Are they getting with high-quality curriculum? And are those teachers the best-trained teachers that we can have? And not only that, are we attracting the best teachers by having the kind of campus culture that teachers want to come work for? We pay, like, we're at the top of the scale. But it's really that culture in that classroom and in that school that's really going to attract and make that commitment to providing the highest pay payoff for us and attracting the best quality teachers. So we get the best quality product that our parents demand and our students deserve.
Dr. Smith?
Yeah, if I may, I think, and it goes to both what Ms. McMurro and Mr. Will Banks just said. So again, these are big, broad themes or priorities. I think we're getting into the, I'd really like to see it be targeted on teachers over the course of the next year. And we can develop that key progress measure. But for this, right now, it's, do these accurately capture the sentiments of the Board of Trustees? And is there a way to narrow the blue boxes down? And then, we'll bring back, as an administrative team, to you all, the next steps. So example, if professional learning is one that you think, and we can tweak some words if you want. But my thought on it is, is professional learning should probably never go away if it becomes one of your priorities. And it probably goes beyond teachers, not just ensuring that teachers have high-quality professional learning opportunities, but that our administrators do. And that our bus drivers do. So that we're constantly improving in every department all the time. Because I think, going back to what you talked about, about recruitment and retention, I think a lot of people actually look for positions that they can actually learn and grow in as well. And if it's the ability to do that in a broad sense, we might be able to provide a very targeted recommendation for the coming year that focuses on teacher professional learning that allows us to measure how we improve that over the course of the year. And then the next year, it might evolve if we've made some substantial progress into another group or expanded. So just wanted to throw that in there as well, is that I think we're, some of it, we're getting into. I'd really like to see the action step this year be focused on. And that's coming next step. We're at the blue box statement right now.
Mr. Mike?
Well, then that will change what I say. So if we look at just big overview, if we can go to the first slide, I'll just say the ones that stick out to me that I would really like to see. The academic progress, it's all about student achievement. That's why we're here. Looking at the data, data is key. I mean, the data tells us where we are at. And I think academic progress will tell us, we're here. This is where we want to be. And here are the measures to get there. So that's very, very important to me as far as ensuring that we achieve that high level of learning and performance. But also, you know, we have focused to pay our teachers the best out of North Texas. But with that, there come other things, right? If you're paying the best, you expect the best. I mean, for me, my ultimate goal is to see AISD be the top-tier performing district in all of Texas. That's what I want to see. Why? Because it benefits all of us. Benefits the community, it benefits the kids. I mean, it changes the game. Tired of hearing about other school districts. I want ours to be the best at all times. The second thing is safety and discipline. I would love to see that. I think if we ensure that we have consistent discipline in Arlington ISD, then we can truly focus on education. And it all goes hand in hand. You know, I keep going back to, we pay our teachers the best. But having good, consistent discipline will allow them to focus on education. It will allow them to have a learning environment where they can teach students and people will want to come here. But then the other aspect is, we look at low enrollment, right? Why are people unenrolling their kids? I've heard it on the campaign trail. I'm pretty sure my fellow colleagues have heard it on the campaign trail. I mean, it's, let's make no bones about it. People talk about discipline, or there's rumors out there on different schools, and we got to change the game. And so I think that should be a real big focus. I like culture as well, too. I think all that goes in there. On the second page, engagement. I think beforehand, you all have heard me on the campaign trail talk about engagement, engaging the community, going where they are, going to meet them in their backyard and figuring out what it is that they need so that we can provide that. I would love to see engagement on there all day long. Because what you do with engagement, when you engage the community, you engage the parents, you engage the people, they feel like they have a voice. And they have a voice because we're going out there and asking them, what are the issues that affect you? What are the issues that affect your portion of this district and how can we help? And in turn, what do you do? You have advocates, you have people who believe in what we're doing, you have people who will fight tooth and nail to ensure that we survive. I mean, we've talked about the issues and challenges in Austin and all the political realms that make things difficult for school districts these days. But I always believe if you have an army of people behind you, then that makes a big difference. And then marketing. Marketing is big because no matter how good you do things, if you don't tell people, no one knows. We've got a huge social media platform, we've got voices, we've got stakeholders, we've got people throughout. I think marketing is, is key to let, let, let our voice be heard. I'm, I'm a big fan of if, if there's something that's going to be said, we say it first. We own that space, we take it. We let people know exactly what's going on. And what do you do when you take it first? You dispel rumors, you stop people from saying this or that, you own that space. And I think Arlington I S D is the best advocate to talk about Arlington I S D. I mean, we can, we can own that in all regards. But it's tough, right? You've got so many great priorities. I wish we can do them all at one time. But just for me, those are the ones that stick out to me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Ms. McMurro?
Quick 10 second addition to what you just said, Mr. Mike. Trustee Will Banks, Ms. Anita Foster and I had the pleasure of going to Raise Your Hand Texas Summit at Holdsworth. And you reminded me of something I meant to say when we were talking about marketing. If we do not promote our narrative, it will be promoted for us. And so, you know, who better to tell our story and promote our identity as a district than us? And so I, I, I just wanted to reiterate that. And I think that there is a lot to celebrate. It's, it's nothing short of inspiring and just, I'm in awe of what happens in our classrooms every day, on the bus every day, in our cafeteria every day. There are recipes that are created by students, there's a show featuring some of these culinary kids. It's just so exciting what's happening on the day to day. And I just want to really make sure that we're promoting that, publicizing that every chance we get because those are the opportunities offered to children.
Ms. Haynes?
Thank you. Responding back to the marketing piece, what you just said, the two things you highlighted, those are student experiences being highlighted. You're shouting those student experiences out, which is why student experiences needs to be prioritized. Has all the good we're doing, everything you want to put out there is our narrative, those are those student experiences that give balance to the whole child measure. So we really need to consider prioritizing that as well.
Okay, does any, any other trustees with comments, questions? So I will actually, Mr. Mike ended with saying, would love to keep them all, but we can't. And I would actually challenge the idea that we can't keep them all. And the reason I say that is because Matt said, Dr. Smith said, that the, the goal of this prioritization exercise was to figure out what the board believes should be the focal points for the district in the coming school year. And as we went around the dais and talked tonight, every box here had a trustee say, this is really important to me, this is a priority I think that we have. And I know that the best strategy, the, the literature will say that you should have three to five priorities, but I think each of these are unique enough. I think each of us agrees that each of, each one of these is a priority, is important enough to be a priority, to maybe resist the idea of thinking we have to collapse it to three to five. Because I think at the end of the day, that might be getting to three to five for three to five sake. And let me explain that. And so maybe we shouldn't have to force ourselves to do it. Because I think if we wanted to collapse a few of these boxes down into each other, we could. Because if you, you, you know, on the first set of four, the words grow, improve and learn, some variation of those appear in almost, I think, all of them. You know, you could do something like, take the engagement and the marketing piece, right? We could say for culture, or not culture, for engagement, we should, we could ensure that community stakeholders know about and have meaning, meaningful opportunities to engage in the work of Arlington I S D. So we could do that and then we would be moving the bullets, some of the bullets or most of the bullets for marketing under engagement. But we'd essentially be saying the same thing and saying that those are all priorities. I will still also give a plug for the resources, the resources tab. I realize that's an add-on that I, that I, I made, that Matt, Dr. Smith responded to. But I do think that that is unique enough. I mean, we could, and, and I said, when I was bringing this up at the last meeting, you know, we could put compensation in learning environments and curb appeal and things like that under culture. Those are all, are student experiences, those would all fit there. But I do think that it is a priority for this district to address some very significant resource challenges over the next year. Dr. Smith mentioned a $25 million deficit that we adopted in the budget. But as we all know, it's not, that's just for this year. And we used, we do have the benefit of having a substantial fund balance to help us ride that out and give us runway on it. But structurally, we're actually looking at closing a much more significant deficit in a relatively short amount of time. And so I don't think that, at least for me, there's, there's not really another one of these that continuing financial excellence and dealing with our resource, our financial resource issues that we know are coming really fits in. I do think that could be its own standalone for me. But overall, I'm, I, we're not going to solve the priority conundrum tonight. But I, I'm, I think after the discussion tonight in the camp of, let's not, I think these are all worthy priorities. I think elements of all of them will work their way into whatever box, number of boxes we narrow it down to. And so maybe let's not get too caught up in the narrowing when I think we're comfortable with. What I hear is that we're actually pretty comfortable with what is here, even though it might be more than the number of boxes that we would like to see. On the whole, Dr. Smith, I would say I really like the crafting of the language for each one of these. I do, I do think they're very well done. And that's all I have.
Trustees, thank you. I think a couple of things on this. The, the good news is we're here to try and make sure that the board priorities come to life in our system. The challenge that I think we're still going to have, if we keep all eight, is I'm going to come back to you and say, we can't do everything at one time. And I think we just need to be able to wrestle with that and to be clear about what expectations are over a set period of time over the course of the next year. Because the movement that I think we heard, that every one of you wants to make in various categories, requires resource, time, focus, energy. And I don't know that we can achieve all of those in, in that calendar year. And so what we, we're more than welcome to keep the priorities. And I, I agree with President Chapa about, I see them, like, I wrote them, I see them as individual things. But in the end, we also have to scope our work for a year into realistic opportunities for our staff to deliver on. Because at the end of the year, when June hits, when July hits, I want to be able to look at you and say, we made progress on the things that you said mattered most. And if we don't have clear enough targets and reasonable enough timelines, we're not going to hit that. And it's just fact. So I, I still think we've got big work ahead of us coming up. If the board is willing, we can go ahead and adopt these priorities. We will list them as part of what we would do in strategic planning so that these priorities are a voice of the board as we go out to our community and strategically plan for the efforts over the coming year. Then we would also start to develop those key progress measures. And what I would suggest in those key progress measures, the priority statement is what you were focused on tonight. Those key progress measures are what our administrative team will put together as a recommendation on the highest leverage work. So based on what you are saying in those priority statements, this is what we feel that is the most important work that we would undertake over the course of the year to move the ball forward on that playing field in that area. And it would be specific, measurable, results oriented, time bound, et cetera. All of the smart things that I know y'all want, and we would put that in place. I just also want to be sure that when we go into that, we go into that with eyes wide open, that resource does matter in all of this, too. So we're talking about transformation and improvement in a system, not just maintaining some of the things that we're trying to maintain. So it's big work ahead of us and I'll, I'll leave it like that. If you have feedback for me individually, please let me know. I'll talk to Mr. Chapa as Board President about next steps and whether we can come back to y'all and approve those priorities at the next meeting or if we need to have additional discussion from there. But I thank you for your passion, I thank you for the effort that you're putting in. And I know this is, this is big work. But as you all know, in all the literature and even in board policy about the role of the trustee, this is a big role right here about really defining where we want to go and where we want to be for the future. So thank you for your effort, Ben.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We'll move on now to the action item portion of our agenda. We have two action items tonight. Action item A is tax rate adoption. Dr. Smith?
I'd like to invite Darla Moss up. You know Darla is our Chief Financial Officer and she has an action item for you to consider tonight regarding the tax rate for the current school year.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. President Chapa, trustees, I have a presentation for you tonight that will go fairly quickly. It's one of our routine items that we do annually on adopting the tax rate. It's the, one of the last things as far as adopting the budget. Of course, the board is required to adopt a tax rate that supports the budget that you adopted back in June. And these slides are just information on how we calculated that tax rate. So this is a timeline, you're familiar with this, we've shown it to you before. But we started back on June 18th with a public meeting to discuss the budget and proposed tax rate. On July 25th, then we received the certified values from Tarrant Appraisal District. And on, with that information, we sent information into T E A for the tax, taxable value survey. Once they got that information, they calculated our M C R rate and gave that to us. And so that enables us to calculate the tax rate that we're proposing to you tonight to approve. So this is just a, just a reminder of the portions of the total tax rate. The maintenance and operation portion of it funds our school day to day operations. And then the interest and sinking portion of the tax rate funds any bonded debt that we have for buildings and, and such. When we look at just the M and O tax rate portion of it, the tier one is the portion that is the M C R that's calculated by T E A. And then there's tier two, which is level one, enrichment pennies. The V A T R E that we had in, back in November of 2020, we adopted the, or the public adopted, approved the enrichment pennies to add to that total tax rate, our total M and O tax rate. House Bill Three actually made significant changes to the M C R, or to the tax rate. It was, it established the maximum compressed tax rate, which is the lesser of, or the compression is the lesser of the property value growth, which was calculated at 4.8% this year. And then the state's estimated property value growth of 2.87%, which for A I S D was a total of .6428. And that M C R rate was calculated based on the 2.87%, which was, is the lesser of those two compression rates. The chart on the left just shows you a picture of the decrease in the M C R over time, starting in 2021 when it was adopted. And the chart on the right just shows you historical data based on what the ceiling is, what the floor is, and then the historical data for the A I S D M C R. On the, the very right-hand side of that chart shows the percentage of our property value growth as of July. And so again, this shows the total 2024 proposed tax rate starts with the A I S D M C R. That's historical from, since 2021. We take that amount and add the enrichment pennies of 17 cents to get our M and O proposed tax rate. Then we add the I N S tax rate of .2907 to get our total proposed tax rate. So that shows us .8128 for M and O, .2907 for I N S and a total tax rate of 1.1035 that we're proposing for you to adopt tonight. This is a historical picture that we share out with you sometimes. Two key takeaways here is in 2019, 20, House Bill Three compressed that tax rate by seven cents on the M and O side. And the other key take, takeaway is if you'll see that increase because of the V A T R E that we did in 2021. So we're also required to calculate a no new revenue tax rate. And that takes, tax rate is simply to, to determine whether or not we can raise similar local tax revenue. It also only, does not include the effect of state aid or recapture in that calculation. But it does include both the M and O and the I N S portion of the tax rate. So the proposed tax rate is 3.74 cents less than the no new revenue, revenue tax rate and approximately 3.28% less. We're also required to calculate the no new revenue M and O tax rate, which you see on the screen. It only focuses on the M and O portion of the tax rate. And it does account for the offsetting changes in state aid and our recapture amounts. The proposed M and O tax rate is 5.2 cents less than the N N R M and O rate and approximately 6.01% reduction. We also are required to calculate the effect on a $100,000 home. And you'll see by the chart that it reduces a homeowner's taxes by $12.10 or approximately 1.47%. And then we, I'm just showing you a estimation of the levy comparison from 2023 to 2024. It's a $2.6 billion increase in the taxable value. The M and O rate was reduced by 1.21 cents and our levy decreased by 8.1 million. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. Otherwise, administration recommends approval of the tax rate ordinance as presented.
Trustees with questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I have a, a couple of questions, Ms. Moss. Wait, Mr. Wilbanks?
Go ahead, Mr. Chapa.
It's your prerogative, Mr. Wilbanks.
I do have two things I want to point, sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Chapa. I do have two things I want to point out, Ms. Moss. How often have we been in this position where our actual proposed tax rate is less than the no new revenue rate?
Not often, not since I can remember that, since I've been here.
Well, and that's only been a thing for like six years. So this has got to be a first. And I, I don't know how it came about, but a lot of districts around us are getting beat up because their adopted rate is higher than the no new revenue tax rate. So, you know, it's important that our, our taxpayers realize that we are not raising the rates. We're generating the same, and according to you on slide, on the estimated levy comparison, do I read that right? We're actually going to generate $8 million less revenue?
That is correct.
Now, of course, the state will pay that up. Okay, the second question, I'll be brief because it's running late tonight. So the maximum compressed rate is made up, well, our M and O rate is made up of the maximum compressed rate plus the 17 golden pennies, correct? And so as that goes down every year, because of compression, the, the compressed rate, the percentage that we're raising from the golden pennies of our total goes up, right? Each year, because that 17 cents stays the same while the compressed rate goes down.
Yes.
Explain to me, the yield on- Explain to me, the yield on those is more beneficial, the higher percentage those pennies are, right? Because we get a higher yield on those versus the copper pennies?
I'm not sure that I'm following you, but as the, the calculation for tier one, as I was showing on that one screen there, yeah, the maximum compressed tax rate is actually whatever, we're going to multiply that by the taxable values, or the taxable levy, the levy that we have. And then when you look at the tier two, the enrichment pennies, that 17 cents is going to be calculated by that same amount. Now there's, in the fund, funding formula, the enrichment pennies, you know, will, our recapture amount will vary by that because of the enrichment pennies, but for the most part, we're using the 17 cents to calculate that in the formula.
Okay, so there's no additional benefit as our property values go up, that we yield more per penny for those golden? I thought they yielded more.
In the formula, yes.
Yeah.
You're right.
So then, you know, that would allow us to still meet our goal of paying competitively and, and providing raises to our staff? Because it's going up at a higher, those guaranteed yields are going up at a higher percentage? Or am I?
Yes, but I think it's, I, I wouldn't just say that.
It's more complicated.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, knowing that's more complicated.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, maybe we'll talk about that offline, but I think that's good to know. I, you know, as that compression goes up, I think there's a benefit in there, but given that there's maybe only three people in the state that really understand how the funding formulas work, it might be hard to parse out.
And I will say that it is, you know, a complicated process, and, you know, the state is supposed to kick in and hold us harmless on that. When you calculate it, it's not going to be an even number. It's not going to be, okay, one for one, because there are too many, you know, parameters in the calculation of funding for you to say, okay, if it goes down 8.1 million, we're going to get 8.1 million back from the state. It's not always exact, just because of how cumbersome the calculation is.
Okay, great. I do have a motion. I'd like to go ahead and make it, and then continue the discussion if other trustees have comments. So I'd like to move to adopt the tax rate of $1.1035 per $100 of assessed valuation for the Arlington Independent School District for the tax year 2024. The tax rate is comprised of 0.8128 per $100 of assessed valuation for the maintenance and operations portion of our tax rate, and 0.2907 per 100 of assessed value for the interest and sinking.
I have a motion by Mr. Will Banks. That is procedurally proper, and we can take a second at this time if someone would like to second it. Ms. Fowler has the second. We do have trustees with more comments, so we'll recognize Mr. Mike.
Just real quick, school budget is, it blows my mind. So, you know, my question is, I'm trying to figure out, how, how do we have a reduction when we have a deficit budget? And, and if you can't answer that right now, that's, that's fine, but.
How we have a reduction in taxable values and a deficit budget? Well, the deficit budget is based on how much revenue we, we calculate that we're going to get in, what we're actually estimating in revenue, and then how much we spend. That's where the deficit budget comes from. If we actually have more expenditures than we do revenue, then you end up with a deficit budget. Based on, and I guess I'm, I'll try to, to help, help out a little bit, when you're looking at, we, our taxable values went down by 8.1 million, and you're saying, why does it go down? And then we have a deficit budget? Because we adopted a budget knowing that our revenue would be X amount, and we were going to spend more than we actually were going to generate in revenue. Does that make sense?
Clear as mud. It, it made as much sense as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Any other trustees with questions, comments?
I had a similar, I had a similar question. So I think, I think the overarching, like, issue for me is understanding the concept of, yeah, that's why we, we, we are projecting a deficit for the fundamental reason of less revenue than expenditures. But I think the question is, how does this, how does, how does adopting a tax rate that is a below no new revenue tax rate intersect with the fact that we have a deficit budget? Is that going to result in us bringing in less revenue and therefore making it more difficult for us to close the deficit?
Whenever you bring in less revenue, it absolutely will. But I, I think that once you adopt the budget and we calculate or estimate what we think the tax rate is going to be, we're, we're not getting all the information that we need to even calculate that at the time of the budget. We are waiting on TEA to say, what are our taxable values? When we adopt a budget, because we're a July 1, June 30 district, we don't even have the information that we need actually at the time. It's just an estimate.
Right.
We don't have a tax rate. We don't know what the MCR is going to be.
Right.
We don't know what our taxable values are going to be. We don't receive those estimates until July.
Right, but is, is by, by adopting this tax rate, is, will that result in us receiving less revenue than we estimated when we did that?
It will not, because when we posted the ad back in June, if you'll remember, over the last three to four years, we've been posting the ad at the rate that we already had. But when we build the budget, our team actually estimates what we really think the rate is going to be, and we account for that. So if the question is, do we think because this tax rate that we're adopting is generating less, or is that going to add to the $25 million deficit that we already have? The answer to that question is no, because when we calculated and estimated and forecasted what we thought the revenue was going to be, we accounted for what we thought TE, TEA would come back with the MCR.
Okay.
Rate as.
Okay, so adopting this, even though it's below the new, no new revenue rate, is not going to impact our ability to handle the deficit because we're not meaningfully going to be different than the amount of revenue that we were projecting when we adopted the budget?
That's correct. Now, it won't, I mean, there will be some adjustments, just like we do every year. We'll bring back a budget amendment. Once we get the actual levy in October, there may be some adjustments, but this is not going to be a significant impact to it.
Okay.
I don't believe.
Now, I think that, and so that, that, I think, is a technical, that's helpful, and that makes me, you know, we don't really have a choice here, right? I mean, this is the mandatory compression rate that the state set with HB3. Like, we have to do this. So while I'm, I'm, you know, hey, it's a good deal for taxpayers, right? We're adopting a budget, a tax rate that is going to bring in less revenue than we did last year, that, that is, that is something that some people care a lot about, but to the point that Mr. Mike made is, I think, sort of a conundrum of, well, let's assume we lived in the world pre-HB3, 2019 HB3, and we didn't have to mandatorily compress our MNO rate. That world would make it easier for us to address the budget, because we would be in a scenario where we could have more control over the revenue side of the equation, right?
Absolutely, and that's why, you know, you know, the district went out for the VATRE. On the one slide where it shows, I think it's that.
Yeah, and, and.
That slide where it shows this, we thought that our tax rate was going to be $1.17 and maximize it.
Right.
The same year, we never saw $1.17, because the same year, the state came in and compressed it by seven cents.
Right, and then, since then, they've also not increased the basic allotment since 2019, which was in the same bill that the mandatory compression was in. And then we've also taken over a 20% hit in the loss of our purchasing power because of inflation. So had we not passed the VATRE, what would your, what do you think we would be able, what would the scenario be that we're in right now?
It would be worse than, than we are right now.
It'd be really, really bad.
And, you know, we already have a $25 million deficit. It would be worse.
Yeah, I have, I have been very grateful multiple times over the past few years with the way that the state has, has treated us on the finance side, that we were able to get that VR, VATRE in when we did, because of the combined effects of the inflation and the compression rate. I mean, it's a compliment to you and your staff how well we've been able to manage it, given all of those headwinds. Okay, well, that's, it is what it is. We have to, we are cutting taxes, and we are bringing in less revenue. We are being fiscally responsible, but at the same time, this system, combined with the effect of not keeping pace with inflation and the basic allotment side, I think this system, maybe this isn't what, I don't think folks intended by adopting this system in 2019 to help taxpayers out, that I think folks anticipated a scenario where the state holds overall school funding, sort of, not only, it's not stagnant, because after inflation and student enrollment growth, it's actually decreased, and the combined effect of those two things and us being able to affect the revenue side, I think actually hurts us in an unintentional way. And so when you combine that with, you know, we just passed resolutions against the Tarrant Appraisal District's new reappraisal plan that potentially is going to siphon off even several more million dollars, I, I think it, again, is something that is chipping away at our ability to continue to serve our students in the way that we envision with the priorities that we're about to consider.
And you're correct, and, and my one concern, again, is right now, they're holding us harmless, but how long is that going to continue?
Right.
And are they going to increase the rate? They've been compressing it, but, and holding us harmless, but how long is that going to continue?
Right, the combined effects of everything, I think, are very worse, I'm heading into the legislative session. Okay, there is a motion on the floor that's been seconded from Mr. Will Banks.
Hold on one second.
Mr. Will Banks? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa, and I'll be brief. Let me ask a question that I think gets to what Mr. Chapa and Mr. Mike were getting at. Let me ask it in a different way. So how could the maximum compressed rate end up yielding a rate that's lower than the no new revenue rate? And it sounds like, I mean, what is that based on, and how could it?
It's based on our, let me see if I can go back to this slide, maybe that'll bring some clarity to it. I'm looking for the one with... I guess I'm skipping it, sorry.
That one?
It's the one that had the, oh, okay, the ceiling and the floor. So all that comes to play in the calculation for our AISD MCR, the six point, .6428 there. The state compression has a ceiling on it, and so as long as we're not above the ceiling, there are some times where, let me see if I can go back to a year that we were actually above the ceiling or above the floor. Most of those years, we've been above the floor and not at the ceiling, so it depends on where we land there, how, how that is calculated. Does that make sense? Is that, maybe I'm just not understanding your question.
Yeah, well, I mean, it just seems like a conundrum that, as Mr. Mike was alluding to, that the compressed rate, which TEA told us, is what our rate is, right?
Yes, they calculate the rate based on what our taxable values are.
And then that rate ended up causing us to be below the no new revenue rate, which points to a flaw in the system that maybe we need to change legislatively, because, you know, especially right now, you know, to my colleagues' credit, we really could use those extra pennies to get us at least to the no new revenue rate, and then that would make taxpayers happy. It would make our life easier. It's just, the way they design this system, I think, my point is, is it's flawed, because I think we all agree, everyone, like, I'm a homeowner and I pay property taxes. I like the compression mechanism, as long as the state makes up that difference, right? In the funding formulas, which they do, but, like, this is an anomaly that shouldn't be built into the system, and it's outside of our control. But it, it just boggles the mind that we could end up in this situation to begin with. So that's all.
And thank you, Mr. Will Banks. It's, in my mind, it is not an exact corollary, but it, it, it's a bit like if you were, if my family were going further in debt, and I decided to go take a lower-paying job at the same time and bring in less revenue. That seems to be the position that we have been put in. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It has been seconded. There are no more pending comments or questions. We'll move to vote. I am showing, my screen is still on the slide. All seven trustees vote, all in affirmative, the motion carries. Tax rate has been adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moss. Next action item is Consider Texas Education Agency Docket Number 274-SE-0424. Dr. Smith?
Trustees, this is the item that we briefed you on in closed session. Tonight, we ask you to consider approval for that.
I see Ms. Haynes.
Yes, I have a motion, if it's appropriate now.
Go ahead.
Yep. I move to authorize the superintendent to resolve TEA Docket Number 274-SE-0424.
We have a motion on the floor from Ms. Haynes. It needs a second. I have a second from Ms. Richardson. So it's a motion by Ms. Haynes, a second by Ms. Richardson. Seeing no comments or questions, we'll move to a vote. All seven trustees voting in affirmative, the motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Smith. We'll now move on to the consent agenda portion of our meeting tonight. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion from Mr. Will Banks. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Fowler. We'll move to vote. All seven trustees voting in the affirmative, consent agenda passes. We'll move on now to our open forum for non-agenda items. Give me one moment. I know we have some speakers tonight. Ms. Crossno, do we have any requesters registered to address the board on non-agenda items?
Yes, sir, we do. We have three.
We have three. I understand one of them will be speaking virtually. Can we move to that one first?
Yes, sir.
The first day of school, I dropped off my daughter and all her school supplies in a class that I assumed would be her teacher. The following week, my mother went to pick up my daughter, and while, while in the waiting line, the other parents make, made her aware that some students had been switched classes without informing the parents. Two days after, we received a letter that they were moved due to classes, moved due to one teacher having 32 kids, which I completely understand. After my daughter being moved on August the 21st, my mom went to the school to pick up my daughter with her paper in hand that we must have to get her, and she was told that my daughter had been picked up already and pushed to the side. My mom told her no, that no one could pick her, pick her up but her. She was told again that they didn't know who picked her up, but she had already left. That is when my mom called me while I was at work and asked if I had picked up my daughter. I told her no, neither had her dad. My mother's feelings were basically disregarded for when she was, she was just wanting an answer, and panic set in within her and myself. One teacher finally approached her and told my mom that she will go to the off-road office. She didn't tell my mom why or anything. Five minutes later, my mom called me and told me that they had found her. Then she was in the, she was in the, in the front waiting for the bus to go to the Boys and Girls Club. My daughter has never ridden a bus anywhere other than to go on a field trip. The teacher that wa, that went to the front told my mom that she had asked my five-year-old how she was going home, and that my, my daughter said she rides the bus to the Girls and Boys Club and took her to the front, instead of checking her paperwork that was filled out. that was filled out and was given to her previous teacher. That teacher knew she took my daughter to the front and didn't say anything to my mom to give her some comfort that she knew where she was at. I went to the school the next day at my lunch, my lunch hour, to speak to someone to get some answers and speak to someone that this was not okay. I was told by the front desk that both the principal and the vice principal were headed to a meeting, and if I could come back. I politely told her no, and then I needed to speak to someone regarding what had happened the day before, which the front or anyone else was not aware of what, what had happened the day before. That is when I spoke to the person in charge of kindergarten and pre-K. That's when I was informed that the teacher in charge of my daughter's class was a substitute, and that there would be a teacher starting soon because she was out sick. I said, okay, and left it at that. On August the 26th, we went to open house and meet the teacher. When we arrived, we were in the classroom that my daughter is in. And the two people to receive us were not the teacher. And that is when we found out that our kids are still with a temporary substitute and that they would receive another substitute next week. I told them that I was not happy with the situation, that when, will my daughter have a stable, have stability in, in her class? I briefly spoke briefly with the vice principal on my way out, and she had no clue what had happened about the pickup situation, about losing my daughter. And I did inform her that all the parents are not happy with the substitute situation. My daughter is still, still hasn't come home with her folder that she's, she's supposed to come home with that were, where they tell us how their day went, at where they informed us at the meet the teacher night regarding how their way, how their day went or other paperwork that we're supposed to do with them every night. So my question is, who do I need to speak to regarding my teacher having an actual teacher and learning the way she's supposed to? Because she constantly says to me that she does not want to go to school and tells me she does not like her class. What happens with all the school supplies I took? Who make the decision from?
Ms. Army, I'm sorry, your, your, your time has expired.
Okay.
I, can, we did not hear the very beginning of, of your, your statement, and that, that's why I gave you some extra time. But I believe you mentioned the name of the campus, and we didn't catch it. We'd like to get that.
Uh, she goes to Rankin Elementary. This is her second year there.
Okay. And you asked who you can contact for, for information about those you, if you haven't already discussed with your campus principal, that would be a great thing to reach out as a first step. But also, you can send your full statement and any questions you have to our superintendent, Dr. Matt Smith. And his, his email address is on the website, but we will have staff get your contact information and reach out to you.
Okay, thank you. Because I have reached out to the principals, but I still have not received any answer or the other teachers.
Okay. We'll have central administration follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Crossno, our next, can I see the list? All right, we'll move on to our in-person speakers. We have Paige Garcia. Okay, Ms. Garcia, before you start, I got caught off guard with the, with our virtual speaker, and so I do have a quick, quick thing that I should, should read.
Okay.
Not that I think you're going to violate any of these rules. So this is the second open forum segment of the meeting that provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You have three minutes to speak, and Ms. Crossno will notify you via the timer up there when your time is up.
Okay, awesome. Thank you all so much. Good evening, President Chapa and Dr. Smith and members of the board. Thank you so much for the opportunity to address you tonight and for your dedication to our community and students in AISD. And I must plug in, thank you to my army of people behind me and watching tonight. My name is Paige Garcia, and I am a mother to four AISD students. I am a kindergarten teacher here in AISD, and I'm a taxpaying citizen of Arlington. I, like many of you, have a significant stake in AISD and believe in our potential for greatness, but I see room for improvement. Tonight, I want to discuss a crucial but most often misunderstood education practice, which is the district leveling process. While it intends to optimize educational outcomes, its timing and implementation can have significant effects on students. And I strongly believe that the way we are leveling in AISD is detrimental to our students and families and needs immediate review. Three years ago, I taught pre-K. We were over the student-to-teacher ratio the night of meet the teacher. And by the first week, by the end, we had 25 students. By Labor Day, we were relieved to learn that we would get a third teacher, but it was difficult to lose part of our class that we spent three weeks with building relationships. Telling the parents caused much anxiety for them. The next year, I moved up to Kinder with the same cohort of students, and the previous year's situation was repeated. Now, here I am with 26 kindergartners and about to go through this process for the third time in a row, along with that same cohort, because the teacher they're losing is the teacher we're gaining. For many students, the shift can be disruptive. They have begun to build relationships with their peers and establish a routine. A sudden change in their learning environment can be unsettling, leading to confusion and anxiety. Our young learners especially thrive on stability, and a change of this scale can impact their confidence and motivation. We have students who, since they have had to go through this process more than once and fearful, are fearful of this time of year. We are breaking trust with our community and creating a negative culture within our schools. When the leveling process occurs, it's very disruptive for all stakeholders. Just in my school alone this year, we have 138 students whose education has now been disrupted four weeks into their academic year. Unfortunately, temporary setbacks in learning are inevitable. We need to start finding a solution for this process. I fear that if we continue this process, we will lose more students to neighboring districts or even the multitude of charter schools surrounding us. In conclusion, district leveling must be implemented thoughtfully and improve educational outcomes. Thank you all again, and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Our next speaker is Luciano Varela. Mr. Varela, you have, you have three minutes.
Good evening to the board. My name is Deborah McDuffie, and I'm the Corporate Communications Manager at National Life Group.
And my name is Luciano Varela. I'm the Senior Relationship Manager at National Life Group. National Life Group is actually an approved fourth or B retirement provider for the district. But we're here to talk about two things, the National Life Do Good Fest and the Beats for Good music contest. So the National Life Do Good Fest is a benefit concert series that started at our sister, sister campus since 2014. And since then, we've raised over $500,000 for charity. This year marks the third year we'll have it at the Levitt Pavilion downtown Arlington this October. Last year's co-headliners were Mark Chestnut and Jack Ingram, and we've had over 6,000 people attend the concert. Last year, our opening act was a 2022, 2023 Beats for Good winner, Arlington's own Sam Houston's Manacho Band. Yes, this year, concert's coming around, and we're going to have another opening act.
And that's why we're here tonight. We have really, really exciting news. Three of our finalists, or three of our final acts are going to be from Arlington AISD. Tomorrow opens public voting, which is why we're here. We need your help. Your students need your help. Everyone in this room, everyone in the city, and I'm looking at you, Mr. Mike, because I heard what you said about the social media. Anything that you guys can do to raise awareness is going to put these kids in the top position. The, the winning act has the opportunity to not only open Do Good Fest, but they're going to win $5,000 for the school's music program. The students themselves will get a $1,000 cash prize. Second place gets $2,500 for their school, and then third place gets $1,000. I used to be a math teacher. There's five finalists. There's three places that are going to get a prize, right? There's three Arlington AISD acts. You guys could sweep the board. So if there's anybody here tonight that I can get in contact with, if I can get their email address, we have graphics. We actually have graphics for each of your students. Two of them are, two acts are from Arlington High School, and then one is from Sam Houston. The students and the schools already have their social medias, but I would love it to give to you guys as well so you could share it on your school, school district newsletters, Facebook pages, anything, even your personal pages, anything that you guys can do to help these students out. And then, of course, if you can come, it's going to be right down the street, right? Right at Levitt Pavilion. If you guys are able to come, it's on a Saturday, really nice evening. It's going to be a really fun event.
That's it? Thank you so much. And if anyone?
Oh, Erin Watson. Yes, yes, Erin. Okay, all right, all right. I like her. Erin Watson. We have a couple of acts, actually. And we're going to have a four-time Olympian. Shante Lowe is going to be there. We're also going to have a Chuck that's raising awareness about veteran suicide. So there's, it's a lot of things that are going to be there.
So, yeah, so we'll wait for after the beep. Anyone like to talk to us? Thank you so much.
Did you share a date?
October 12th, Saturday, October 12th. The first act will start at 5:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you. And you can find all of our email addresses on the, there's a Board of Trustees section on our webpage. It has all of our email addresses if we don't manage to talk to you.
Anyone, anyone is good to email?
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That ends our non-agenda portion of the evening. We will move on now to our superintendent's report. Dr. Smith.
President Chapa, if you'd like, I can propose that I would email you my superintendent's report, given the 10:51 PM timeframe, if you would so choose. I see nods, so.
I'm seeing some nodding heads. We will receive the superintendent's report in writing. We'll move on now to board reports. Are there any trustees with reports? Ms. Richardson.
I have, I had one small report. We had something big happen a few weeks ago that we did not get to recognize. And so I think I have a graphic that we were going to show you guys. But we have a really big birthday that happened on our dais that we did not get to celebrate before. And so wanted to wish trustee Will Banks a happy birthday. He had a big one coming up, and we know how much he loves his birthday and wanted to get to celebrate him and our board report.
Congratulations to Mr. Will Banks. I believe he will be celebrating by leaving on a jet plane tomorrow. Okay, we will not be moving to closed session this evening. We do have secret, oh, it's not on my agenda, but we do have secretaries report. Ms. Richardson.
I have the following items to report for the record. When we discussed with Mr. Kael, Mr. Will Banks requested money to train alt certification teachers. Mrs., the amount to train alt certi, it's late, guy. I can't read my own notes now. Mr. Will Banks requested the amount to train alt certification teachers. Mrs. McMurro requested teacher fill rate be reported to the board along with new hires and resignation reports. President Chapa requested follow-up numbers of how many students are in our Ready, Set, Teach program pipeline. And in Dr. Smith's report, trustee Haynes asked that in our draft priorities that to add the word families to box number three in culture.
Thank you, Secretary Richardson. No other business on the board's agenda. It is 10:53, and we are adjourned.